All right, let's come to order. Catherine, would you please take role?
Yes.
Bergey?
Here.
Steffler?
Here.
Lady?
Here.
Gamba?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
McKenna?
Here.
Strager?
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, is there anyone who would like to speak about something that is not on this evening's agenda? Please give us your, for the record, your name and address.
My name is Nolan Chatel and my address is 2417 Palmer Avenue in Glenwood Springs. And I would like to talk about our electric meters. Our safe dependable analog meters were taken out without our knowledge and they will be replaced by wireless digital electronic devices that are often referred to as smart meters that put out pulsed microwave radiation that is extremely harmful to health. It causes DNA breakages and many symptoms. The interference from radiation can alter the electrical activity that regulates our hearts, our brains, and our organs, and it damages our thyroid. I'm not going to go into the symptoms because I will lose them. Pulsed radiation is the most dangerous for all living things, that is humans, animals, and plants. Smart meters send pulsed radiation through your entire house, your entire body, your entire town, whether you choose them or not, and that's 24/7 for the rest of your life. You should know that thousands and thousands of medical doctors and scientists have come out against smart meters, and they've been doing this for years. And that's in some of your references you can look up, and we've given you two DVDs, and there's a reference to another DVD that shows the fires and how the smart meters work internally and why they are and why they catch on fire. Why is our own utility putting in these smart, quote, "smart meters"? One reason is that they can track how much we use, the electricity we use during peak periods, and they can charge more for those periods. Normally, bills will double. Also, the utility can remotely shut down or dampen any of our appliances at any time. Smart meters are expensive and they can catch fire. The Knights of London does not allow their companies to cover fires caused by smart meters. Our information, our personal information, will be open to thieves and hackers. The former CIA Director James Woolsey says the smart grid's security vulnerabilities make it a really, really stupid grid. That is a quote. In contrast, analog meters are inexpensive, dependable, they last indefinitely, they don't put out pulsed radiation, they don't spy on us, they don't elevate bills, and they do not catch fire. And analog meters can be read remotely without being in line of sight for up to a mile. And all the utilities, none of the utilities want you to know that. The information sheet that I was given from the Glenwood Springs Electric System were created by a company who manufactures the smart meters, and that paper only mentions one radio transmitter when in fact there are two transmitters, and one of them can transmit, can pulse up to 190,000 times a day. Over two and a half years ago, there were over 50 cities in California that outlawed smart meters. Saskatchewan, the government, ordered all 105,000 smart meters to be removed and replaced with analog meters. And around the country and literally around the world, people are either fighting smart meters or they're having them taken out because of all the problems that they create. Utilities like to offer opt-outs as a solution, and opt-outs don't work for two reasons. And one is that each of the smart meters talks to all of the other smart meters, and if you've opted out, you're still in the middle of that. You wouldn't want a pregnant woman to give birth to an autistic child because she didn't know the dangers. Most people don't know the dangers, and everyone deserves to be protected. So, that's all I'm going to say, but I have a request, that you all do your research, and I apologize, because I know you're some of the busiest people in Glenwood, but I'm asking that you do the research and that you come back and that you vote to not allow smart meters in our little town, and then ask the utility to replace them with the safe analog meters that last indefinitely. I have an analog meter that's 30 years old in Montana, and it's fine. It's also locked, and it has a laminated legal warning, "Do not touch this smart meter", I mean this analog meter, I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak about something not on this evening's agenda?
Hi, I'm Gail Chapman, 1317 Grand Avenue, Glenwood Springs, Colorado. This is my first time to a city council meeting. I am assuming that this is the smart meter that she just went over is something that we would like to be able to, we're passionate about getting this heard and get the news out, and I'm sure she gave you guys information, DVDs to watch, and I know I had to take time out to watch them too. And I think that this needs to be really given a lot of consideration just because of its health ramifications, the possibilities that can take place because of pulsed EMF. And I'm certainly not an expert, and I don't know what process we need to have to put this in front of as many people as we possibly can, but I would like to definitely have that move forward. There's an expert, if y'all watched the second DVD, there is an expert that does get up, and he has made a verbal offer to go up in front of any expert, and he's been in the military dealing with EMF or electromagnetic pulses for decades, and he's made the offer to go publicly in front of anybody in any type of debate to discuss the health ramifications that can affect all of us. That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak about something that's not on our agenda?
If you don't mind, I'm going to take a little bit of time during Citizens Appearing Before Council to say something.
Sure.
It's probably more appropriate than under Council comments, given the, given the comments I'm about ready to make. So, our friend and longtime citizen appearing before council, Lisa Newman, passed away last week at the age of 62. She had a long battle with cancer, she was a tough person, she fought it hard, and last week she lost that battle. But I want to acknowledge what Lisa, you know, has done for us and done for the city. She was very passionate about our town, she was extremely talented. A lot of you have seen her drawings, she drew a lot of stuff for our city pro bono, she was always just out there drawing, showing her ideas, keeping us honest up here, telling us what we didn't know, what we didn't know what we were doing, and sometimes agreeing with what we were doing. But she used the heck out of Citizens Appearing Before Council to make a difference, and we obviously encourage everyone to use this time to make a difference. Lisa sure did. Sorry, I didn't think I'd break up like that, man. I'm going to miss Lisa. I'm going to miss the, wow, I didn't think I would do that, sorry about that. Anyway, we're going to miss Lisa, she was, she was quite the citizen. So, thank you, Lisa.
I will just add one comment to that. I have saved all of the drawings that she brought to council, and I have a place for them in my shop, so they're going to be on the wall pretty quick.
Yeah, I would just add that I think the poor attempt, poor imitation of, let me start over again. Lisa drew up a drawing of the parking garage, and we made a poor attempt to imitate that with what we ended up with there, but it was significantly improved over what we would have had without Lisa's input. And I think she had a huge amount of input and impact on what the Grand Avenue Bridge and the pedestrian bridge ultimately going to look like. So, I would, I would agree that it's a major loss for the city of London.
I just wanted to make sure that she made a difference, and Lisa, you made a difference.
I concur. Thanks, Todd. Is there any other comments on anything not on our agenda this evening? All right. At this point, I will have the Grand Avenue Bridge update with Tom Newell.
Thank you for those words about Lisa. I really enjoyed my interaction with her during the bridge project, and I know for All right, so I'd like to give you an update here, primarily about the work being planned for April on the project. We're in phase two right now, and it's a pretty long phase, so I thought what I do through the phase is come to you each month with what's happening in the next month. In April, we have a lot of good things happening. First of all, the milestones for phase two to keep in mind are the complete demolition of the pedestrian bridge by the end of April and the opening of the new pedestrian bridge by March 1st, 2017. We don't quite have the demolition done, we still have a few bits and pieces of the piece of the bridge around, so we can't scratch off that milestone yet, but we'll definitely get there. What you'll see this month, which I think is exciting, is some things coming up out of the ground, primarily the northwest abutment of the bridge that you see here, you see the superstructure for it, they'll be pouring that within the next two weeks. And we'll also be working on the walls associated with the pedestrian tunnel on the northwest side as well, and you can see part of that wall is already up for the entrance on the north side. The other thing that will be coming up out of the ground are the piers for the pedestrian bridge. This one is on the north side between I-70 and the river, and that'll be the first to come out of the ground. I've got a plan here showing the bridge in profile and plan, the plan's on top with downtown to the right and the hot springs to the left. This is a pier that you'll see come up first, right on the north side between the river and the highway. You'll also see this pier coming up too, which is on the other side of the river, just north of the railroad tracks. Those two piers we're concentrating on because, of course, high water will be coming up soon, and we want to make sure we get everything in before the river impacts those areas. We're also going to be putting the piers up over on the north side next to the hot springs. This picture shows the caissons that are already in place, and those are located on the plan and profile off to the left, right over there. So, a lot of things coming out of the ground here in April, so it'll be an exciting time for the crew. The other thing we're going to do in April is we're going to move up the construction activity at exit 114. That was originally scheduled for state, phase three next year, but for the efficiency of the project, as well as good timing, this is the off-season, we thought we'd take the crews that are just finishing up with exit 116 and bring them over to 114 to do the work. This work involves pretty much off, off the highways, each of the lanes, there will be one lane open on both sides of these ramps, the eastbound off-ramp and the westbound on-ramp are where we'll be working. We'll also be doing some minor improvements in the roundabouts themselves and some striping. So, that work will begin in probably about two weeks and last through the end of May. One lane of traffic and a two-month construction schedule. There we go. And then finally, and kind of right in front of us actually, is we will be doing the one-lane closures between 9:00 and 3:00 on weekdays on the bridge so that we can pour concrete for these piers and also the caissons for the new vehicle bridge. This will happen over the next two weeks, it's already happened this week as well, and hopefully we'll get those caissons poured and back to four lanes of traffic in a couple of weeks. Keep in mind, this is just 9:00 to 3:00, we won't be having the bridge closed during rush hours. So, as far as public information goes, we will have a phase two flyer going out soon. We have a huge mailing list of 900 addresses. We also have a couple of thousand on our email list and a few thousand on our Facebook, so everybody will be getting that flyer. And we also have a River video we just produced, and we'll post that on our website as well as show it to our River group so they can get an idea of what's involved with the River closures that are coming up in this year. And that's all I have for this evening.
Great.
Thank you, Tom.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Tom, there was some resurfacing of Midland that was scheduled, is that still?
You know, I don't know, Catherine, whether they're going to be resurfacing that now or later on. Right now, it's still scheduled in phase three, you know, right before we open up Detour.
Okay, that's great.
We had a discussion this morning about the new shuttle that we're going to be trying to implement in the next month or so going across the bridge, and one of the questions that came up was the timing on the construction of the roundabout. My understanding is that is going to take place during, I'm not sure which phase it is, but when the bridge is shut down, is that correct?
Is this the 27th Street?
No, the roundabout, I'm sorry, the roundabout at Sixth and Laurel.
Oh, at Sixth and Laurel. Yeah, that is scheduled for phase three, and actually, I think phase four, when the bridge is closed, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, but we will be working in close proximity to that area with not only utility work this phase two, but also those walls and approach to the above them. But we won't be getting into the intersection until phase four.
Is there any information that can be provided at this point as to how much impact that construction of that roundabout is going to have on the bus? You know, I know we're going to be doing a lot of, you know, mass transit to the north end of pedestrian bridge during phase four, and, you know, the question is just, you know, are they going to be able to get through the construction of that roundabout without significant delays, which is also phase four?
Yeah, definitely. We want to prioritize getting them through that construction because the idea, of course, is to get over to the north side of the pedestrian bridge. I think kind of a turnaround is envisioned at the corner of Pine and Grand Avenue when the bridge is closed, and transit vehicles as well as people needing to access the hot springs and Hotel Colorado will be able to get through there.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Tom, what impact will the utility work have on pedestrian travel?
On pedestrians on the north side?
Yeah, specifically looking at the, we've got a lot of hotels and those people who need to go to the hot springs, so.
Yes.
Just that travel back and forth, any significant impact on pedestrian travel?
Yeah, we really have to pay attention to pedestrian movements when that's happening, utility work over there. We are trying to get that crossing in at Sixth Street and Pine. I have not heard back from the project manager yet, otherwise I would, we talked about that this morning, I don't have information back on when that's going to happen.
Okay.
But yeah, that's, we've got to do that.
All right, any other questions for Tom? Thanks, Tom.
All right, thank you very much.
One quick question, you mentioned the River video, will it be up on your website or will there be a link somewhere where we can?
Yeah, website that I just had up there, I'm sorry. There will be a link there that says River Video as soon as we get it done, we're just fine tuning the production right now.
Good.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Tom. All right, to best my knowledge, next item on the agenda is agenda changes. We don't have any agenda changes, is that correct, Catherine and Drew?
Nothing I'm aware of.
Okay. Council comments. Any comments you'd like to make?
Just, I didn't chime in earlier, but I'd echo the sentiments about Lisa Newman that you guys brought up. Don't worry about it, Todd, we all get there. She was a fabulous citizen, gave a lot to the city, so thank you.
I do have a comment. I just, I'm going to probably sound like a broken record, I'm going to say this over and over again. To all the citizens, it really is important that you network with your friends and your neighbors or your circle on Facebook or whatever group you choose, and make a decision about how often you can do it, but decide to form a little, what I would like to characterize as a supper club, and once a week or once a month or twice a month, select a different restaurant downtown and come downtown as a group and darken their door and patronize them and spend some time downtown walking the shops and doing some shopping. We all have a stake in helping these businesses get through this time, and it's the least we as citizens can do if we want to have a vibrant downtown. So, I urge everyone to really think seriously about not thinking about doing it, but actually doing it. It's going to be really important to all those businesses that we cherish and that we hope remain through the entirety of the project.
Thanks, Stephen. Thank you, I agree. All right, next is the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve?
I have a quick question.
Yes.
Being that I was not here for the previous meeting and I would have recused myself from this discussion, do we need to be recused from this?
It probably, it probably makes sense if you and Todd just wanted to step back from the consent agenda tonight.
Okay.
All right, you both rolled back, so I guess you got as far away from him as you could. So, with the remaining five, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Stephen and a second by Matt to approve the consent agenda, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
You mentioned for the record that Leo and I were?
Yes, and for the record, Leo and Todd were both recusing themselves from that vote. Next item on the agenda is a presentation regarding recycle.
Now, that is what you call shit.
Well, um.
Oh, I'm not quite sure, I didn't want to go back there.
Counsel, while that handout's making its way to you, I just wanted to clarify that in addition to the presentation, the agenda item will require action as to the discretionary grant approved just now through the consent agenda, all of the other discretionary and tourism grants recommended by the Financial Advisory Board, and this agenda item includes a grant request as well.
Good evening, everyone, happy spring. I think it was winter, very much deep winter when I was last here, so great to see you. It's bike season, so it's a great time to be speaking with you. In February, you all demonstrated tremendous enthusiasm and support to bring Bike Share to Glenwood Springs. I was both humbled and enthused by your energy, your vision, and your drive to implement it in a very effective and quick way. And as we know, if there's a road, there's a way, so hopefully today, I would love to just give you a little update on the way that we've been on in the last two months since you've spoken with us and showed that enthusiasm, and talk a little bit about what the next steps are. So, since February, Steve Smith, who is here in audience from Glenwood Springs, has shown great leadership in helping lead the Recycle Bike Share initiative here in Glenwood Springs, and has helped form an advisory committee. That advisory committee has met several times to help talk about Bike Share, different partner possibilities, engagement, and has even hosted an initial station sighting exercise in which there's this beautiful map now of where people put dots of where they wanted recycle stations, where they think they're important locations, then went on to identify some of the key ones, as well as some of the more important ones, perhaps specifically during the Grand Avenue Bridge closure. So, that was just one of their very first scoping exercises, and it was really effective. Similarly, we've had initial conversations with the local bike shops and with bike shop operators to begin the conversation of Bike Share versus Bike Rental so that we're keeping an informed and communicative dialogue. Also, on a very exciting note, the first funds have been secured for the Glenwood Springs Bike Share system. The RFTA board unanimously approved funds for a Bike Share station at the BRT Stot at 27th Street Station. It was a rather momentous occasion when they wanted to make the first pledge, they wanted to get this system going, they know the urgency of time, and so they committed the first capital fund, so that was a tremendous effort, thanks to representatives on the RFTA board who helped lead that effort. Further now, we've submitted a grant request to you for funding for the initial scoping phase of this effort, and we, hopefully, which will be approved this evening to keep the momentum moving forward. Similarly, we've submitted one to Garfield County Commissioners in hopes that they as well can help support this effort moving forward. So, let's just talk for a moment very briefly about what will be accomplished in this scoping phase. So, to be clear, we'd love to come back in front of you on June 16th to present the learnings and the findings of the scoping phase, and the scoping phase will really answer, hopefully, at least in a preliminary way, some really important questions. Can Bike Share succeed in Glenwood Springs? What would it cost to implement it? And what would be the projected annual operating costs? What's the best operating structure, partnership and ownership structure? So, those questions will guide the following steps. First, we've already started creating this working map of where Bike Share stations would be, where the most important ones were and are, and what their size would be. That exercise will inform the sizing exercise and the costing of what the capital infrastructure costs will be. And so, in that plan, we'll do a basic feasibility assessment of the system. Can Bike Share work? What are the challenges of Bike Share in Glenwood? What are some of the topographical challenges? What are some of your transportation challenges, your connection challenges, what are the employment opportunities? So, we'll assess those to really come to terms of how can Bike Share succeed? Put together an estimated capital budget for a sufficiently sized Bike Share system, it needs to be large enough to succeed. Secondly, what is an estimated first-year operating budget? And then, how will those costs project over time? We won't be able to get into all of the details of that, but we will try to do our best to anticipate what that would look like over multiple years. And then, we propose And then we'll propose a funding structure. What would the ownership structure look like? And outline a very basic fundraising plan of how to achieve the funding for this system. And we'll recommend how to perhaps secure the operating as well as the capital funds to make this system a reality, as well as those sources and their timelines. So all of that by June, and with your support in this funding, that will put us, make the first step to get through this scoping phase. We'll then come back to you in June for you to be able to look at this and assess, do we want to engage in this initiative? Is this something that we as a counselor can get behind, where the city of Glenwood Springs can make a reality? And in doing so, we're going to have to set some reasonable expectations. First of those are, what's a reasonable implementation timeline? So again, we only know what we know, right? But Aspen took three years to get on the ground. We know that that timeline can be accelerated particularly if there's a political will and particularly if capital funding can be accelerated through grant support and through jurisdictional support. Dedicated funds will need to be set aside for the planning and implementation phase. It was $150,000 to get the Aspen system on the ground. Granted, there's some efficiencies that we'll find because we've already have, you know, our nonprofit in place as examples, but implementing a Bike Share is a complicated, very intensive endeavor that requires funding, staffing, and will need people to actually do the work. So we'll need to dedicate implementation funds and planning funds. We'll need to structure an agreement of what our partnership will look like and what's the best operating structure for Glenwood Springs. Have to have city staff in contact to be able to facilitate, to be able to move forward. We've been working very closely with Dave Betling to date. We'll look to Glenwood Springs to help lead the capital campaign and commit funds so the better jurisdictions will join on board, as RFTA has already done. Through jurisdictional support, through your support, we're able to apply for grants that we wouldn't be able to. Your political will, your engaging with your colleagues and your contacts will also help propel and expedite the funding process. Approvals, it takes time to site stations, to get them in place, to find the right locations. Expedited approvals and facilitated collaboration with the city will also be important. And then community buy-in, that we can all do it together, but we're going to need to build a lot of momentum around this in a very quick timeframe. And so that's what we'll be doing over the next couple of months. And just to be clear, that it will be in June that I think that we need to have the real discussion of can we implement it? Can we, are we willing to engage in the financial commitments of making Bike Share a reality? And at that point, we can then launch truly the implementation phase with your support. So that's where we are, and I'm happy to answer any questions with the great momentum we've built to date.
Thank you. Is there any, anybody have any questions for Merto?
I do have a question from you, Todd. You mentioned Garfield County, that you have a grant request. Is it through the FMLD or?
No, it's through discretionary.
Commissioners Discretionary Fund.
Yeah.
Okay, and when will they be reviewing that or when is that?
Hopefully sometime in April.
Okay, all right. So you should know, maybe by the end of the month?
Which would be great.
Okay.
Exactly.
Have you had initial discussions with the commissioners about this at all?
The, I know Steve has had some initial conversations with them, for sure.
Okay.
And any conversations you can have with them would be great as well.
I have a question or thought, and this is probably maybe putting the cart before the horse because I know we got to first figure out if we can even implement this at all.
Yeah.
But it seems that during the Grand Avenue Bridge closure, there may be a higher demand for this service than there might be afterwards. Not that, hopefully, the demand doesn't go away, but it might diminish somewhat. And one thought that I had is that perhaps we could engage Cardale, Newcastle, other RFTA members that currently don't have any ride share program to at least maybe go in partial funding on some stations and some bikes that initially are located here, and then after the bridge, they get located into those committees perhaps.
That's a great...
That way, then we would have them in every, from Aspen to Newcastle, which is every jurisdiction and served by RFA.
That'd be a really great way of also community collaboration, coming together and saying, we have a pitch point here, and then we'll redistribute it afterwards.
Right.
It's a great idea, for sure.
Any other questions?
The mapping that you did of the different locations, is that actually at the library or posted somewhere that we can?
Sure. Steve, we have pictures of it and we're happy to send it along to everyone, and we'll go ahead and do that. And we're going to continue to do others. Steve's been incredible in leading initiative, the initiative of getting citizens together, speaking with different groups. Been working with Drew and trying to engage any citizen who wants to be part of this advisory committee in doing so and making that information available.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to clarify the relationships. If you approve the grant tonight, the grant goes to the WeCycle nonprofit. And they are a future contracting party for this service. So depending on, depending on what is presented to you in June, you're either going to proceed with all of the other steps, including major funding and major fundraising commitments, or it was just a good idea. And I say that now because of the reference to the Citizen Committee. You have one of the most effective volunteer citizen structures I've ever seen with your Transportation Commission and Planning Commission and River Commission and a lot of, you've got the right people on those boards and they're actually doing real work and giving you good advice. This was a case where I thought, do we need some sort of Ride Share City Commission? And I don't think you do. Dave and I, Dave and I attended a meeting of the Citizen Group. It seemed very much to me like you've got the heart of the Glenwood Springs biking community already working on this. I don't think it's something that we can improve by putting out a larger call. That said, I think we should put out a larger call and just make the public aware of these meetings, so anybody who wants to be part of the discussion can be and should be, but it's not something that, you know, we want to manage or navigate or whatever. It's working right now very well, so I don't want to try to improve it. It doesn't need to be improved. They're doing a great job.
In that regard, Merto, would it be possible for you to share the schedule of those meetings with us so that we could just put a notice out that if someone from the public is interested in at least listening in and writing their comments, they'd be able to do that?
That's a great idea. We should, as those meetings become more frequent and more scheduled, we'll make sure that they're posted through the city sources as they're available. And we will dedicate a page on our website where we'll post pictures such as of the initial sighting maps as well as a schedule to keep everyone appraised so people can go at their own initiative and stay informed. That's an excellent suggestion.
Thank you.
I have a question, and this is for you, actually. I'm a little confused. Are we awarding an additional grant in addition to what was on the consent agenda?
No, no, only one grant.
Okay, so it's just for $10,000?
That's correct.
And that's already been awarded, so what do we vote?
No, 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 you haven't awarded it yet. It wasn't on the consent.
Oh, because what I'm looking at right here, it is on the consent agenda.
Yeah, it's a little confusing.
Okay. I think that's why I'm confused with you.
Yeah, it's a little confusing. And I guess, I guess, you know, it is going to be, I don't want to, I don't want to sound contradictory, but very soon, this is going to be the Glenwood Springs Ride Share Bike Share Project. And it'll fall under your Transportation Director eventually, but in this stage right now, you're contracting with this nonprofit to come back with a proposal. Just trying to clarify relationships. At WeCycle's request, actually, they wanted to know who's doing what.
I think Leo is accurate. Correct, I think we did.
You did approve it, it's on the consent agenda.
Yeah, it's still on number seven of the discretionary grants that we just approved through the consent agenda.
And that's why I probably get clarity so we don't end up...
Yeah.
Sorry.
Don't worry, I want to make sure that's very clear. Well, I only applied for one $10,000 grant.
Merto, could you lead us through the list of funding that you had in your handout? It shows an estimated direct expense of $18,500. So just lead us through that a little bit and let us know where some of that other funds is coming from, if you would.
Great question. So we have applied for another $5,000 from the Glenwood Spring, oh, sorry, from the Garfield County Discretionary Funds.
Okay.
And then we will continue to speak with perhaps other private donors, private businesses, and then hopefully some of those, that remaining $3,500 will be able to find either in kind through contributions, through perhaps be it engineering or planning resources, so to try to find as many efficiencies as possible.
Okay, thank you.
I just have a comment. I was in two commissions that this was presented at, actually three if you count RFTA. The Financial Advisory Board and Transportation. And both of those boards were very, very favorable to this. I don't recall hearing really anything that was of major concern, so I was very glad to hear that because I am a big component of this.
And I may have missed it. If I did, you can refresh everyone's memory. When do you expect to be back to us with a proposal?
Hopefully at your June 16th meeting, per pending agenda availability.
All right. Any other questions before I take public comment on this? Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak to this particular item? All right, seeing that, I will close the public comment. I think you guys are right that we did actually approve the grant in our consent agenda, but how about we just confirm that we support that grant?
Only one grant.
Right.
Are we back to council here?
Yes.
Okay, yes. Do you want to have a motion towards that affect or?
I mean, do you have?
You don't really need to.
We don't need to. Okay. We just have to...
I didn't get a vote on the consent agenda, but I affirm this.
Thank you.
I'm with him. Just step back, too.
We've got unanimous support. Thank you all very much. And we'll see you in June.
Thanks.
When you'll be opening the bus halt system mid-May, Aspen early May, in advance of the June meeting, it'd be great. Any of you can, please, we'll send out invitation, but come up and ride, familiarize yourself with the bikes. We'd love to take you on a tour and we'll make sure to get that, if we want to do a scheduled one, in advance of that meeting as well. So thank you all very much and go back with your continued project.
Thank you. Okay, next we have a presentation on the Hanging Lake rest parking area and trail update.
I have a presentation for you. Good evening. Thank you for having us. My name's Aaron Mayville. I'm the acting District Ranger for the Eagle Holy Cross Ranger District with the Forest Service. Had the pleasure of meeting a few of you before. I'll say at the outset, our group, when we finish here, we're going to go have dinner downtown at one of the fine restaurants.
That's quick.
That's right. So I have the great pleasure and challenge of managing Hanging Lake. And I want to say at the outset, special thanks and recognition to this body for the support you've given us thus far. Funding that you've given us has gone towards Hanging Lake Rangers that we put down there the last few summers. Pivotal, pivotal and really important towards getting us where we are today. So thank you very much for that. What we want today, and we're excited to talk about this, is a great step forward towards a sustainable management solution at Hanging Lake. And I'll introduce Ben here in a moment to talk a little bit about that. But quick context, a few years back, when we were looking at what to do down there and how to manage this with the growing visitation and resource damage, parking lot issues that we're seeing down there, we enlisted the help of the Volpe Center. And they are through the U.S. Department of Transportation and transportation planning experts. Their job is really to take these kinds of intractable transportation problems and help walk us through a solution. So a few years back, we enlisted their help. And among a number of products they've provided us, this capacity analysis has been at the top of the list and really is going to set the stage and the foundation for moving forward. So with that, I'll introduce Ben Rasmussen from Volpe, and then I'll take it at the end and we can answer some questions. Before, lastly, I'll say, we are having a public meeting tomorrow at the Glenwood Community Center at noon. All right? Noon. This presentation you're about to see will be given there as well. We could talk for hours about this, and we're here for any and all questions you may have, but I will open it to you all and members of the public to come to that meeting tomorrow if you want to get into a little more depth. But we'll have questions towards the end. Thank you.
Thanks, Aaron. And we did have a presentation earlier today as well with invitations to stakeholders similar to what we're having tomorrow, so we're hoping to catch as many people as we can to let them know about our work here at Hanging Lake. And that's why we're here today, to share information, let you know where we are in our work and also let you know where we're going. Wanted to touch upon kind of the bedrock of our work, and that's these five main goals. Why are we doing what we're doing at Hanging Lake? We want to protect the natural resources. We want to manage congestion at the parking lot. We want to enhance public safety, improve visitor experience, and continue to support local tourism. Annual visitation has been tremendous. 2012, 73,000 visitors, up to 132,000 in 2015. No, we did not have zero visitors in 2013. We had a malfunction in the trail counter. So you can see though how this spreads out over the months, and commonsensically, we have a lot of visitation during the summer months. This year was record-setting, almost 1,000 visitors a day during the month of July. What does that look like? Trail crowding, we have people, you know, queuing up to go up the staircases. The banisters that the Forest Service installed there about six, seven years ago are seeing strain, and they're already looking stressed, and the manufacturer was very surprised about that. That was not supposed to happen within this timeframe. Public safety, not only is it people getting in there to help people in need, but it's also cars backing up on the interstate, which is a huge hazard and risk. And then the natural resource degradation, the lake, people are getting in the lake despite numerous signs. They're bringing dogs. The trail is widening. We're seeing impacts to the vegetation and species along the trail and up at Spouting Rock as well. So what have we been doing? We've had a number of stakeholder meetings. We have a stakeholder group with Colorado DOT, Excel, members of the tourism board, the Forest Service, of course, and Federal Highway Administration, State Patrol. We're trying to figure out what are some attainable solutions that we can come up with here, both in the short term and more in the long term. And these meetings have been ongoing. We've met over the past two years about every month, some in person, some over the phone, but the group really works well together. We're all united in wanting to see this resource, this incredible resource, be a sustainable tourism bedrock and asset for years to come. So what have we done so far? There's an annual report on summer visitation patterns that's made up of observations of the seasonal staff that's there over the summer, and then our trail counter data. The National Park Service performed an ecological assessment last year where we got a sense of what the ecological impacts have been there at the site. The capacity study is wrapping up this spring. We're going to be implementing a visitor survey this summer where we're going to get a sense of where are people coming from, what are they doing when they're here and at the lake, and what's their experience like? Is it good, is it bad? How does that correlate with the visitation that day? And also, what is their willingness in the future to accommodate different changes in how people get there and whether they have to pay to come to Hanging Lake? So we're going to ask those questions. We're going to start getting a sense of people's opinions and their current experience there by hearing directly from them. Last, we're undertaking an alternative transportation feasibility study where we're focusing on bus and shuttle access to see if that might be a feasible solution to bringing people to the lake and in a sustainable manner. We're not seeing these peaks and impacts that we've been seeing over the last few years. So the purpose of our capacity study, it's to explore different visitation experiences and impacts in the parking lot, on the trail and at the lake, those three areas. We've developed and are examining four different scenarios. Actual conditions, which is based on weekend, we were here last summer where it was within the 95th percentile of the busiest period in terms of people on the trail. We're looking at a physical capacity or original capacity scenario that assumes that each one of the parking spaces there, the legally designated ones, and not the ones where people drive on the sidewalk and park or up near the trees or elsewhere, but the 112 legal spaces is full, and as soon as someone pulls out after an average of three hours' visitation time, someone else pulls in. Slight restrictions, we reduced that physical capacity scenario by 30%, and then a scenario we're calling the environmentally sensitive scenario where we reduced that capacity by 60%. Our assumptions are based on our collective thinking in the stakeholder group and also our... observational data. Operating hours potentially for at least our scenarios would be from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., May through November for that six-month period, up until actually November 1st. The average, average passenger per vehicle we're looking at is 2.2 people. Average group size is 3.2. Not sure where they pick up that other .4 person. And then the percent of arrivals that are bicyclists, we want to make sure we observe and accommodate that in the future, 5.7% of visitors. So we are seeing impacts based on what, what we're do, we're doing there already, thanks in large part to your support. On those managed days, we're, we're lopping off that peak. We're not seeing that extreme visitation. It's actually getting a little bit more spread out. We're accommodating more people on managed days, but at a lower level. And that's good. That's showing us that this can work. Not going to get too far into the numbers here, but when we look at the different scenarios, the, the top three rows here are actual conditions on a average managed and an unmanaged day. Then the, then the physical capacity, it actually can accommodate that same amount of people, but it's spread over the course of the day. I'll show you a graph about that in a minute. Slight restrictions reduces that from about 111 people per hour to 78 people per hour. And then the environmentally sensitive scenario, down to 45 people per hour. So very different experiences for people hiking the trail and at the lake. When you have 111 people per hour, it's basically a busy sidewalk. And when you have 45, it's a very different, different kind of experience. We developed some scenarios, or we developed some, some videos based on the scenarios. And I cross my fingers that this will work. But hopefully here you'll be able to see each of the scenarios compared to one another. The actual conditions there in the upper left-hand corner, then we have the original or physical capacity scenario that's spread out over time, slight restrictions, environmentally sensitive, trying to get a handle on what's the spacing between an average hiking group? This is 3.2 person, people per dot. We sped up the time. We're not moving, people aren't moving this fast on the trail, but we also get a sense for the volume of people up at the lake. That blue dot will grow as people come up to the lake. And keep in mind that each dot, not only is it moving up, but other dots are coming down and they're passing each other. And not only, and this is a stylized version of what really happens. Of course, there's people that are hiking more slowly and are getting passed by hiker, faster hikers. So there's a lot of traffic on the trail. And that's why we're seeing it widen from two feet to now six and eight feet in some places. There's a couple of, at the bottom here, you can see a graph that's showing what the, that visitation total per hour is looking like on the trail and at the lake. And under the different management scenarios or the capacity scenarios, we're really trying to level out that overall volume and demand. And we do that by kind of compacting people into a steady plateau during the midpoint of the day. We don't let people in really too early in the morning and we don't let people stay on the trail too late at night. And we don't let it peak at a high point where really the resource gets overwhelmed. Still some hikers in the actual conditions at 8, 9 o'clock, even up to 10 o'clock, last hiker groups coming off the trail. And it's debatable, that, that, it may not be very safe, especially if they don't have proper headlamps. All right, switch back for a couple more slides here and then I'll be happy to take We have a static look here at those different capacity scenarios. Again, very different experiences. If you maintain that original capacity and that volume of hikers on the trail and at the lake over that block of time, that's a lot of foot traffic. It is a very busy period. So we, we're looking at wanting to reduce that so that people have a good experience. They tell their friends, they, they come back year after year. And the resource is sustained and it's not impacted and degraded into the future. Findings, deep visitation really is problematic, not only in the parking lot, but on the trail itself, having impacts on the natural resource, widening, people getting in the water. It's harder to control and harder to enforce people's behavior when you have that, that, high volume of hikers. Different capacity levels affect the, affect visitor experience. Not only do you see fewer people on the trail, but you, you don't have to yield as much as people are coming up and down and passing and, and so on. You, you're getting a sense of the wilderness. You're having a, an experience that hopefully aligns with your expectations. And perhaps most importantly, setting up capacity will help improve access for emergency responders during public safety incidents. And there's been more and more of those over the years. Hikers aren't prepared for the trail. They don't, they're in flip-flops, they don't have water, they're, they're not in good shape for the heat of the day, and there's a lot of risks to public safety. Next steps, we'll, we'll continue with our coordination group into the future. CDOT and the Forest Service have been really good partners working together. We're going to develop and finalize the alternative transportation feasibility study, hopefully later this, this year, hopefully early fall. The visitation, the visitor transportation survey will be administered in July and we hope to have our final report in early fall as well. And then I'll turn it over to Aaron for the next steps from the Forest Service side.
So yeah, what Ben just presented to you, the capacity study is pivotal in, in moving forward, as I said at the outset. Our plan here is to begin the NEPA process this year with public scoping in the next few months, to be honest. And we're aiming for implementation next summer. I'll be honest, this is, it's an ambitious timeline, but, but one I think's possible and doable, especially given the work you just saw presented there. We're, we're still in the, in development phase of NEPA, and that's why, that's why scoping will be coming in the next months. But we're anticipating, you know, the analysis of some kind of shuttle system and some kind of management solution up there that, that really will get us towards a sustainable solution. And at the end of the day, what we really want is the lake to be there 50 years from now in its, in all its glory for our future generations. I'll leave it at that and, and take any questions you guys might have. I'm sure there are some. And I will say too, about the public meeting tomorrow, that if anyone wants to get real deep diving into the, into the weeds, we're there, we're there too.
Thank you. Mayor?
My only question is, who is the ultimate decision-maker on this?
Me. So I'll, I'll be the deciding official for the, for the analysis.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, but, but I think that's important for people to know too.
Sure.
Stephen?
I'm curious a little bit about, you obviously have some ideas, both Volpay and, and you in consultation have some ideas about which you think, which of the alternatives you think is the most doable. Personally, I can remember when you could hike to Hanging Lake and not meet anyone. And that was truly the experience you'd like to have. But that aside, it seems to me the environmentally sensitive alternative would give us the best chance to let this ecosystem recover. And I think that's going to be ultimately important if we want to take that 50-year-long view. And I just wonder how you, how you look at this, too. Give me the benefit of your thoughts about that, if you would.
Yeah, no, it's a great point. And that's why I think that's, it shows the importance of the various kind of steps and alternatives we have. We're still, we're still finalizing which, what that number capacity will be that will, that will push us forward. I will say this, that over the last few years, we have seen some degradation on the trail. But we've, we've, I think we've done a good job of curbing it, of getting there, of, of taking those first steps. And that's, that's the presence, it's largely due to the presence we've seen out there this, these last few summers in our rangers. So I won't, I won't go so far as to say that the environmentally sensitive one is the only one that will allow us to see more of a rebound. I think we can, I think we can manage that with other scenarios as well. I think whatever scenario we do, I mean, we've, I think I've talked to a number of you and we've talked at public meetings, there seems to be some pretty strong public support for some kind of fee system. Whatever that looks like, I think is still to be determined. But the idea there is that that fee would then be reinvested in the site through seasonal rangers, as we see it today, but also trail maintenance, some maintenance on that trail to, to really kind of restore it. The last thing I'll say on that too is that Ben mentioned the boardwalk and some of the infrastructure that the Forest Service put in, I think it's 2009. And it showed some signs of wear, but, but it, that was a great step that we took. And it, and I think a couple of tweaks and, and the life of that will, will last. So that's not a direct answer to your question, but that's where we're going.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
And I, I just thought of a comment after Stephen. I, I think for my, for my part, I, I would like to, I hope that there's some, there's some sort of strategy that preserves this down the road. Because I look at this as a amenity for Glenwood Springs in that this is what, one of the things that draws people to our town. And so taking the long view seems to be a more prudent way to go. And my experiences up valley with, with the Maroon Bells system have been very good. And I, and I've been, I've been up there a lot of different times and a lot of, with a lot of different groups and whatnot. That seems to be a doable system, so.
Yeah.
For whatever that's worth. There you go.
So in anticipation of this meeting and the ones tomorrow, my district is predominantly Eagle County, but we have one, one finger that comes down Glenwood Canyon. And you know, and perhaps for the meetings, I thought, you know, I know we're going to get comparisons to Maroon Bells, because that's what this, this valley is familiar with. And there's definitely some, some comparison to be made, high-use recreation sites, Forest Service management complexities and such. But there's also some key differences, I think. Maroon Bells is much bigger for one, 20 or so access points. Hanging Lake is 1.2 miles, one way in, one way out, 150,000-plus visit, visitors. In, in recreation management, if you throw those two numbers out, 150,000 people on 1.2 miles, you know, your eyes roll back in your head. So that's, it's great comments and I'll say, with Volpay's help, we've, we've really pulled management plans from across the state and the West for high-use recreation sites, Maroon Bells being one of them, and trying to glean some of the lessons learned from that. But I'll say, Hanging Lake's a unique one. You know, in that research we've done, there's nothing quite like this in many ways.
May I ask one more question?
Sure.
I just, the other, the other question I had in my mind is, if you decide that a shuttle system is the way to go, does that mean you will not allow parking at the site, that everything will be done by shuttle?
That is an option we're considering.
Okay.
And that, that we'll analyze. We realize fully that that'd be a bit of a shock and a big change. But I think for a lot of the reasons we've discussed today and we've discussed in the past, it's an option worth, worth considering. With one slight caveat, that it's currently a safety rest area, federally designated safety highway rest area. And to retain that designation, a handful of sites would need to be kept for that purpose. And so again, we, we have some analysis to do in how that's going to look, but you know, our vision is five, 10, something, number of, small number of sites, 15-minute parking limit, just to use the bathroom, something like that. But, but yes, sir, that is one of the, one of the solutions we're looking at.
Thank you.
Kathy?
Do you have any idea what the tolerance for a fee will be? And do you have any idea of the level of that fee?
Yes, ma'am. So in February 2015, we had a public meeting here in Glenwood. I think 12, 15 folks showed up, so you know, it wasn't, that's right. They weren't beaten down the doors, but, but we, the topic of a fee came up there. And, and then just our presence at the trail, we kind of had this discussion quite a bit. So anecdotally and from that public meeting, our sense is that public support is very high for a fee. And I think, I do think people, especially people who've been there recently, see, see where that, the merits of that. We will, I think, I think we'll get a much more firm grasp of the support in the coming months when the scoping period and these, and at these meetings. As far as the, the level of the fee, it's kind of, it's kind of varied. And it really depends, I think, on, on what solution we take if, and just how that looks. If, if there's a business model involved, there's a, there's just a whole number of variables. Again, anecdotally, 10, 15, 20, $30, they will all, we've heard support for every, kind of the range. So I'm, so I can't get too detailed.
That's fine.
But generally supportive.
The survey is similar. We'll ask questions about willingness to pay for different levels of service. So we hopefully will get a better grasp of that through that technique as well.
Great.
One other question that relates to that is, are you, are you looking at putting in place some sort of a fine structure for infractions?
Yes, sir. That structure exists currently. Part of the problem too is, is the Forest Service and some of our budget considerations and resource considerations. So when we're there, our forest protection officers, our law enforcement officers can and do right violations. Whatever management solution we come to, we will, we'll see a market increase in enforcement. It has to come with it, especially in the first few years when, when the change has been implemented.
Can I also ask one more question? In, in the fee structure, I would ask that if it hasn't already been considered, I know our EMS people respond quite frequently to, to Hanging Lake emergencies, that a portion of that fee be designated for our EMS responders so that we can, because that, that is definitely, it pulls, yeah, it pulls us out of, out of response time for the city and, and I just think that would be a really critical piece.
The, well, being a federal agency, we have a handful of authorities that allow us to charge a fee or not and how, and how that works. And again, we could probably talk for hours about that. I can, I can commit to making a note to it and researching.
Appreciate it.
I've got a question that, I'm, I'm going to attend the meeting tomorrow, so we can maybe get into more detail on this tomorrow, but I'm just curious how far you've gotten down the path of, of figuring out how the shuttle might work. I mean, who would manage it, you know? Would it be, I, I think you've had some initial discussions, I think, with Rafta to explore them providing the service, I guess, under contract to the Forest Service. I'm curious about those kinds of, of relationships and the management of that shuttle.
Sir, you're right. Yes, sir. We've, we've had discussions with Rafta. If, if we went that direction, it would be through an agreement with the Forest Service to, and Rafta, something similar, we have at Maroon Bells. That, that's one option we've explored. The other is an outfitter guide type service, similar to what we have now in the canyon with the river rafting. And some kind of, anyway, some kind of shuttle service in that regard. That may include guided hikes, it may not. Again, some detail still to work out. And we've also explored the Forest Service instituting a fee ourselves. So it would be like the Veil Pass model. And there's some other kind of bureaucratic hoops to jump through there. We lean more towards the first, one of the first two options, not only because we can implement it a little quicker, gives us a little more flexibility, it allows us to be nimble to some of the changes we're expecting there. So we've kicked around those ideas, thought about, you know, authorities and laws and how, how those would work. And it really, that's kind of where, where we are with it now. But those meetings have been productive and those discussions have been productive. I think, I think we're onto something here that, that will really be, really be beneficial for everyone.
Great. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the time. We'll look forward to seeing you tomorrow. Tomorrow.
Enjoy your dinner.
Thank you. Recommendations?
Can't go wrong, Steve.
All right, the next item is ordinance number seven, series of 2016, an ordinance of the City of Glenwood Springs, Colorado, amending section 080060020 and 070040090 of the Glenwood Springs Municipal Code Regarding Classifications for the Amendment of System Improvement Fees.
Mr. Mayor, just real quick, you have on your desk, we made some modifications to that ordinance in part in response to an email from you that noted that, ah, it was missing the 070 section in the ordinance that needed to be modified, so.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Will I recuse myself? I'm just walking out, being rude.
All right. So is there any presentation on this, or should we just jump right into it?
I think you can, I think you can jump right in. The references are to your work session of last month, your two-hour work session of March 17th and the corresponding action that you took on March 17th during your regular meeting. Although you had a four-to-one vote at that time, today during the consent agenda, you actually formalized that action through the adoption of the resolution. And that's with respect to what an EQR is and the fees associated with it. So what's left to do is to address that portion of the SGM report. And you don't see Mr. Meyer in the audience, but a representative from SGM is here, should you have any questions. And Mr. Milliard's here too. And Mr. Lee's here too, so you've got everyone, well, not everyone, you have many of the persons that you probably need. In the staff report, there was, I guess, a focus on the multifamily residential fee structure. And at this morning's work session, we needed to address also ADUs. The point being that the biggest hole in the housing market locally has to do more with size than type. So those can be ADUs, those can be studio apartments. And we have given you some options to further clarify EQR ratios based on size, specifically up to 1,000 feet and then between 1,000 and 1,500 feet. And even the developer last meeting said, no one is building anything larger than that. So we didn't feel the need to get more specific than that. In any case where the schedule, the proposed schedule is larger than your existing fee schedule, the intent is to make sure that you're not increasing any fees. So if any of those errors still remain, we want to correct those. And I actually, since this morning's work session, gave direction both to community development and public works to compare the entire residential and commercial EQR classifications presented by SGM to our existing schedule and go through it and mark out, you know, which ones were higher, if any. And, you know, a quick review of that basically said, that's not possible, these are sort of apples and oranges. And I think I'm backing off a little bit from the request that you, or might be backing off, that you adopt the entire SGM schedule. I'm going to stick by the original opinion that it's better than what you have. But what I can't do is guarantee here and now that in every case it's going to be lower. So knowing that that's your policy concern, and if you're willing to sort of take that leap, that a more detailed system is better than the system that you have as to all of the other categories, not just multifamily residential, then in my opinion, it is an important advancement to just adopt it as is. If instead you only want to focus on multifamily residential, this is set up for you to do that. And Carl can verify this, but the ordinance would not change, simply the contents of the attachment would change. And then I also wanted to point out that SGM recommended the addition of a 50% reduction in the EQR schedule for those projects that irrigated using a secondary groundwater source, that makes total sense. That's a lot of water usage, but if they're finding it from some other source and not from our system, they shouldn't be charged effectively for that, so.
Just for clarification, that 50% reduction is only related to the irrigation.
Correct.
Component of the EQR, okay. Yeah, so, right. Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's a good stopping place, actually. That's a, this is not set up for you to act, and I do think that that's what you want to do. You want to move this forward in some way tonight. And you can either take the sort of targeted step, or you can proceed to a more ambitious step. I know that Mr. Lee submitted directly to you a request for further reductions in fees. And I'm guessing that he may want to address you too, but that's the general setup for the item tonight.
All right. Any questions for Drew about this, or Carl, or anyone else at this moment? Maybe I'll go ahead and open it up for public comment and then bring it back to the council for discussion. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak to this matter? Mr. Lee?
Sure. Briefly. Chad, Falcon McGrane, 18, Colorado. I did submit some comments, I copied everyone by email yesterday, thank you for reviewing those. The gist is, if incentivizing housing is what we're going for, then at least my clients, the development community, need something lower than this. The comp plan talks about incentivizing attainable housing. This is one of the few tools that you have as a council to do that. And I encourage you to reduce it. I've submitted a proposed EQR schedule because at the end of the day, it's not just about technical arguments and how much water is used, how many people per unit. It's also about a policy decision, what do we want to do? System impact fees in general are a small slice of the monetary component of this. The long view are lifelong customers on system paying service fees. And we believe that that is more beneficial in the long run of the city's coffers than setting barriers up front. Thank you.
Thanks, Chad. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this topic? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing, or the public comment portion, bring it back to the council. I'll just start the discussion. During our web session, or right immediately prior to our web session at the last meeting, where we were discussing what we should define one EQR to be, we received a lot of water usage data from multifamily projects throughout Glenwood. I, since that meeting, I've spent not inconsiderable amount of time analyzing what we were given in that regard. And I was able to come up with some actual kind of relationships between water usage and unit sizes and bedroom, number of bedrooms, that I find kind of interesting. And, you know, if you remember, the information we received was on the Glenwood Green Apartments, the Matchbook Apartments, Holiday House Condominiums, Manor One Apartments, Manor Two Apartments, and the 23rd Street Apartments. So I think that covers probably 80, 90% of all the large-scale multifamily projects we have in the community. Interestingly, when you look at it on a per-unit basis, the range from average to minimum to maximum is fairly significant. We have a minimum water usage of about 127 gallons per unit and a maximum water usage of 355 gallons per unit. When you break that down on a per-bedroom basis, that range reduces quite a bit with an average of about 87 gallons per bedroom and a peak of 104 gallons per bedroom. And then I looked at it even on a square footage basis. And again, we have a fairly, I wouldn't say tight range, but a reasonable range there with an average of about 0.17 gallon per square foot of water usage and a maximum of 0.23 gallons per square foot of water usage. I do think that it's important that we, as Mr. Lee said, we come up with a schedule that is at least not an increase to what we have and at best would be a reduction in what our current schedule has if we want to incentivize this type of housing. I guess my thoughts are, is I would just throw out a proposal that, you know, it seems, you know, those numbers I just went through work out to, if we were to essentially have a dual approach at calculating EQR's for multifamily projects. One is on the basis of square footage and the other is on the basis of bedrooms. And you would use whichever is the greater calculation. And I would suggest a 0.066 EQR per 100 square feet of floor area or 0.25 EQR per bedroom, whichever is greater. So if you're one bedroom, you're 0.25; if you're two bedrooms, you're 0.5; if you're three bedrooms, you're 0.75. On the square footage basis, if you've got a 400-square-foot unit, it'd be 0.264 EQR's. I won't go through every one of them, but an 800-square-foot would be 0.528; a 1,200-square-foot would be 0.792; and a 1,500-square-foot unit would be 0.99, or essentially one EQR. And I think that that would be a pretty equitable way to go ahead and calculate this with respect to multifamily residences. The other comment I would make is that our current EQR rate for one ADU, accessory dwelling unit, as defined in section 070040090, is 0.25 EQR's. And we are proposing to, the current or the proposed schedule raises that to 0.65 EQR's. I would suggest bringing that down to the 0.25 EQR's. And then the final, or not final comment, but one more comment is that the EQR's related to irrigation usage is essentially proposed to be more than doubled with this proposed schedule. Our current schedule is 0.2 EQR's for every, let me find it here. I'm sorry, 0.1 EQR's for every 2,000 square feet over 4,000 square feet. And the proposed schedule is 0.2 EQR's for every 1,000 square feet. So it's almost in fact a quadrupling of the numbers here. So I would suggest going back to the original calculation for irrigation. And then the only other comment I would make is on the single-family EQR's. Right now, if it's a single-family home, we charge one EQR regardless of the size and the number of bedrooms. And I would suggest that independent of irrigation, we treat single-family homes that are smaller than 1,500 square feet identical to multifamily units. And if it's a one-bedroom, it's, you know, 0.25 or, you know, the 0.066 times the square footage. And, because it, you know, with irrigation calculated separately, if you've got a 400-square-foot, single-family, tiny home on a two-acre site covered in Kentucky bluegrass, you still have quite a bit of EQR in your irrigation, but you won't be charged a whole bunch for your unit itself. So I guess those would be my comments and thoughts on this. Well, I have one, the final thing I want to say is, I did do an analysis based on calculating EQR's for each of these existing projects. For, you know, essentially looking at it with our current code and the proposed EQR schedule that's before us. Glenwood Green, under the current code, would be calculated 36.7 EQR's. Under the new code, it would be 57 EQR's. That's a 55% increase in the number of EQR's. The Matchbook Apartments would go from 28.5 EQR's under the current code to 39.1 EQR's under the proposed code. That's a 37% increase.
Why, are you talking about the original proposed code or are these changes?
No, I'm talking about what's in our packet tonight for these EQR schedules. Comparing that to our current EQR schedule, which is defined in section 080060020.
I mean, this drops from 0.5 EQR per unit, and it basically equals that. So how does that, how does this increase come from?
Where are you seeing the?
Well, looking at multifamily.
I see, okay. It's only 0.5 if you have a studio apartment under 1,000 square feet. It's 0.65 if you have a two-bedroom apartment. It's 0.75 if you have a three-bedroom apartment, irrespective of size.
Great, thanks.
So, and all, you know, the information we were provided by Robin broke it out by, you know, sizes of units, number of bedrooms per unit, and amount of irrigation.
Go ahead.
The amount of irrigation area for each project. And so it was actually not too difficult to go ahead and calculate the EQR's based on our old code and what they would be if we were to adopt.
Right.
What is proposed here. And in fact, because of what you just pointed out, see, right now, our current code is if you're doing something under a six-unit multifamily building, you know, fewer than six units of your building, you're either, you know, you're somewhere on this table here, 0.6 for five units, 0.7 EQR for four units, 0.8 EQR for three units, et cetera. And so when you look at the Matchbook Apartments, which has a bunch of relatively small, oh, no, I'm sorry. It was the Manor One and Manor Two Apartments.
Those are smaller.
Those are all one-bedrooms. The one-bedrooms really aren't changing. And so the, those two projects alone have stayed the same under either of these scenarios, the existing or the proposed. So I would just suggest.
Well, if you're talking about, you know, truly doing some real analysis, it's fair, it seems like you've done a lot of work. And I think on the surface, it makes sense to think about that and consider that, so. If you consider sharing that or correcting staff to do similar analysis, I think that would be good then. And if you take this up with Bert, you know, a future meeting, I don't think I have enough information in my head, so.
Can't remember all those elements?
I'd like to see it.
Okay.
I can't.
Yeah, I can't either.
I was trying.
Yeah, I guess the.
I like the thinking, though. I don't know everybody, I like to take the dive and see what's going on.
Go ahead, Drew.
Okay. So I want to, the only comments that you've made have been effectively about Exhibit A to the proposed resolution.
Actually, no, I did, well, I was using Exhibit B because I did go through some of the commercial classifications, and they appear to be fairly reasonable. I did not try and compare all of them.
Okay.
And so I was actually looking at Exhibit, you know, basically with these modifications to the residential classifications, I was looking and considering Exhibit B.
Wow. Okay. The, with respect to the, what is Exhibit A and B, paragraph two, that is an error. It should be 0.25, not 0.65. So that was pointed out by Councilman Davis this morning, so.
And I would suggest also that all the language after, where it says ADU colon, and then it kind of goes through and tries defining what an ADU is, I would just say ADU per section 070040090 because this definition doesn't conform to the definition in the other one. And so I'd just say.
I would agree with you on that, Mr. Mayor. I think one of the issues I've run into a lot of times is that your utility code starts defining things differently just because you work on them at different times and what your development code does. And so to the extent that we cross-reference the same definition, I think it'll help tremendously.
So in both of those paragraphs two, strike the language and replace it with the reference to 070.040.090. That's an easy edit. I guess where I was getting lost in your presentation, and thank you very much for the presentation, was you were saying that the sort of paragraph three there didn't, I guess, we wanted to explain that the proposals absolutely take size into account, up to 1,000 feet and then between 1,000 and 1,500 square feet.
Right.
And the reason that they escalate is not because of square footage, but because of the logic. of the logic that with more bedrooms, there is more water usage because there are more persons. And so.
Right. And I don't, I don't disagree with, with that general statement that with more bedrooms, there's more usage, there's also more usage actually with more square footage, which was supported by the calculations I did. And so you could have, for example, a one bedroom, 400 square foot home or apartment is typically, according to the data we received, is going to use less water than a one bedroom, 900 square foot apartment.
Yeah. And I, and the, the increased EQR's with the larger square footage is also reflected here. So I was trying to, I was trying to see, I'm committed to getting you to, to advance this. And I'm trying, I'm trying to see whether, whether there's anything that can, you know, if we need to take a break and photocopy your calculations for everybody?
No, they're, I think I'd like to. They probably need to be cleaned up a little bit just from the standpoint of their, and calculations kind of written all over sheets and stuff. So I can, I can certainly provide that. You know, the, you know, essentially what, what we've proposed on, on exhibit B or exhibit A is a very tiered structure. If you're up to 1,000 square feet, it's this. If you're up to 1,500 square feet, it's this. I'm saying a much more, I'm suggesting that we.
A formula is what you're suggesting?
Yeah, yeah. Which is, you know, it, it, well, it's actually just two formulas. One is .066 EQR's per 100 square feet of floor.
One second.
Or the other is .25 EQR per bedroom, whichever is greater.
.025?
Uh, .25.
And your factor is .066.
.066.
Per 100 square.
Per 100.
So it's the greater of those.
Yeah.
Regardless of square footage or bedrooms?
Well, yeah.
Well, I mean, in every case, it's square footage or bedrooms and we're taking the greater of those.
Right. Your analysis is based exclusively on multifamily. And to carry, and to extrapolate that into one, single family, I kind of lost that.
Were you doing that?
Well, I was suggesting that yes, we adopt the same thing for single family homes that are under 1,500 square feet in size. But excluding from that calculation, irrigation, in other words, you know, if, if you, I guess the premise is this, if you have a 500 square foot, single family home, a tiny home, no outside irrigation, I would argue that you're going to use the exact same amount of water on average as a 500 square foot apartment.
Yes, but then people are going to try to game the system about, well, we're not going to irrigate. It's the same idea, we're not going to lock kids in our apartments.
Well, I think.
I think you just have to have block square footage and building square footage and come up with some sort of factor for both.
Well, right now, we calculate irrigation on single family homes separately anyway. It's in, it's in 1D and then it goes down to section 87 down below where irrigation for all residences that exceed 3,500 square feet. And it describes that in here.
So 500s.
Yeah. So it's calculated today. You know, I guess my, you know, my, my only thought is that, you know, right now, we are, we are providing no incentive for you to be able to do smaller homes, which again are going to be affordable, smaller single family homes. And so.
Well, if you're, okay, let me see, for your issue, for versus exceed 3,500 square feet, what's that, 100 homes a town?
I would actually, quite a few have more than 3,500 square feet. I mean, almost any, I would think.
If you have that finished basement, I mean, that's really where I think you.
Oh, this is 3,500 square feet of irrigation.
Oh, of irrigation, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, you gotta, you gotta quarter acre lot. That's not much.
It just is irrigation of all residences that exceed 3,500 square feet. What is the object there?
No, that it's, it's, it's.
It's not one.
That it's, that it's 3,500 square feet of irrigation, irrigated area.
Well, doesn't say that.
I think the intent, if you go to the current code, go look at the very last page of exhibit B. Do you have that?
Okay. If that's the intent, let's just put it in there.
Yeah, and it's, it's, it's in the, it's in this box under the multifamily area.
I just read that immediately.
It should, it should say landscaping area is what it probably should read in that.
Can I make a suggestion to potentially move things forward?
Yeah.
I guess what I would suggest is that you sort of philosophically pick whether you want the more detailed or the less detailed and adopt this potentially on first reading so that we advance the ordinance. Mike can get his analysis out to everybody. Staff can take a look at it. Council can take a look at it. It may require, you know, an additional, you're going to need to open it up for a public hearing. It's not going to be a consent agenda item on second reading, but at least in that fashion, it doesn't slip another two weeks and it keeps you guys on track moving forward to get something adopted.
That sounds good.
So you're, you're suggesting we adopt the ordinance without the exhibits?
No, I'm suggesting you adopt the ordinance with the exhibits. Pick either A or B if you'd like the more detailed or the less detailed. And then we may go back then and tweak. We, we made a small step towards, are we doing a detailed EQR list? Are we doing the more simplistic one? We at least have that step done. You could probably make those changes to the definition because that's fairly easy. I can, you know, that language, we can, we can interlineate before it gets published.
Is there any reason we hold off on making the revision to section seven under the irrigation right now? We want to just go back to, you know, the?
Only because it's, it's a lot of information in kind of now. And I think it would be good to see that.
I gotta, can I ask you to clarify when you say the more detail? Because.
Not more detail, the, the one thing we have, exhibit A, which is the shorter version, exhibit B, which is the larger, longer version.
Right.
It's one or the other. It's not both.
And they're correct, and there's a second example of more detailed, and that is the mayor's suggesting substituting the formula, .066 EQR for every 100 square feet or .25 EQR's per bedroom, taking the greater regardless of square footage and, instead of these specified categories.
Right.
And so really what I was suggesting is not taking up the mayor's proposal yet because at least Counselor Steckler would like more time to look at that. He'd like some input from staff on that.
Okay.
So that's why, we've got two shots at this on readings, so.
So you're asking for either A or B?
I'm asking for either A or B so that we can.
Push this forward.
So the only change we would make if we were to adopt it tonight would be the definition under the ADU.
Right. Secondary residential units, ADU.
Can we also change the rate on the ADU to .25?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's because that was a clarifier anyway. I'm just, like I said, I'm just suggesting that because then your more detailed analysis, I think we can get out to council and the staff and come back in two weeks and hopefully finish this.
Item seven, just be crystal clear that it's talking about 3,500 square feet of irrigation.
Right. And I, I think what I'd like to do is try to take, and that's why there's going to be a little bit more wordsmithing. We, I actually didn't have an opportunity until this afternoon to really work on this ordinance. So I'd like to be able to go through it as well. But really philosophically, sort of that A or B is what I'd like to get to tonight because that moves us forward.
If you're coming back to look at this in detail anyway, if it's not going to be a consent calendar item anyway, then I'm back to strongly asking for exhibit B because it advances your schedule and your system so much further than your existing language.
I'm okay with that, although I'd like item seven to be completely business state. Irrigation of your lot, irrigation of your house, anything outside of your house area, driveway, driveway is irrigated.
It's amazing, I'm in a irrigated concrete.
That's true. It doesn't grow very well.
Anything that's not a structure or an impervious surface.
Well, it's just, I, I think, I think the way the old one was, was written to a certain extent was fine. It described it as landscape area.
Yeah, I mean, I think we got the idea. What turns into an area of garden five minutes after the CDO.
All right. So do we want to, is there a motion to?
Mr. Mayor, I've got a comment. First of all, I'd like to clarify the reason that we are, that we're trying to move this through.
Yep. The, the, thank you very much. As was suggested at your last regular meeting, the starting point is, is the policy behind the land development code comprehensive plan and in this case, the EQR schedule. What are the goals that you're trying to accomplish? And the, the, the primary goal is to encourage the immediate construction or construction in the short term of multifamily residential housing. And the proposition is that by making these costs lower, costs that are within your control, that that building will actually occur. And there remains a pretty vigorous split opinion on the council on that, whether you should tinker with it for that purpose at all, whether even if you adopt the lower fees, it will help, whatever, time will tell and your votes will tell. There were some other, there were some other considerations brought up last time about whether or not there should be incentives for infill development or any sort of geographic targeting. We didn't, we didn't try to tackle that with this reading, but you in fact are doing that by, by adopting lower fees if you in fact do so. And those are the, those are the main policy objectives just for this ordinance. And I just remind the public that you've invested heavily in, and you now have a citizen advisory group in place to revisit your entire land development code and that that should be delivered as a whole finished product in under 12 months now. So you're not going to solve, you're not, you're not going to meet all your policy objectives with this ordinance. I don't suggest that you do. But I do think it's a very important point that this is a policy driven decision tonight.
Thank you, Drew.
I have just a couple other comments. First of all, I'd like to say that, that Mr. Lee has made a good point about the, with the comp plan that, and if we are making a policy decision, we need to keep that in mind. We have, we have indicated that we want to incentivize smaller, more affordable housing. And in order to do that, we've got to use, we, Glenwood has such a limited amount of space. We have got to incentivize multifamily units. So, you know, for that reason, I guess I'm, I'm looking for more, quite honestly. I'm looking for, we've, we've used 1,000 square feet as, as sort of a.
What do you mean by that?
A sidebar. Well, I'm, I'm looking for, for.
A great reduction.
Yeah. And so for that reason, I think I, I like your plan. Mike, as far as the, the formula, maybe based on square footage, I think that that, that could work. But like Matt, I, I would like a little more time to actually look at that. And I'm not sure that, I'm comfortable passing an ordinance based on coming back and revising it. And I just, I have a philosophical problem with that. But I, but we, the other, the other piece of it is the irrigation, particularly with a multifamily unit, I think we need to look at that as far as, as how that is, that is formulated and included in that formula. I think that's it for now.
I would say that I also have real concerns about rushing into adopting an ordinance that seems to have so many open holes and gaps in it with the hope that, you know, after we adopt this, that we're going to be able to work out the details. I'd like to see some of those details.
Clarification, just for clarification, Counselor Davis, I was talking about just, I mean, this is only the first reading and you have another opportunity. That's, if, at least, I'm sorry to interrupt you, if at least we got the clear direction on if you want to go with A or B as the model, that at least would help us out tremendously on fixing those holes and, and moving it forward so we knew the direction we were going in because it's a fairly large question.
Yeah. And we're not just trying to incentivize multifamily, but it's more attainable housing in this community is what I think that we're really looking for. And it's not a new concept. I, you know, I picked up this building application from the building department this week and I know it's been hanging out there for a long time, but even in here, it says, since it uses less water, talking about a water improvement fee, and for the purposes of encouraging affordable housing, the fee for an ADU is 25%. So it's kind of an old concept and I don't want to do anything here that's going to take away from that.
Right.
I'm trying to have faith, Drew.
No, I, I, I also have faith.
Through those details.
I, I have faith in both directions. And I guess if the direction is to return with this ordinance number seven, series 16, with a edited exhibit modeled on this exhibit B and data that applies the proposed formula to either existing projects or pending projects or both, I want to know if that meets your needs because if it does, we'll bring this back in two weeks that way.
I think, I'm, I'm fine with your approach. The idea that this is actually going to stimulate your smaller development, I don't necessarily agree with it. I mean, if you lower the fees, you lower the cost of entry. What does that really do in the long run? It just raises the cost of the land.
Yep.
So you're just kind of, we're just chasing our tail with the fees and, and they're all scheme of things. That's all I was here.
If, if that's the direction, then I don't think anything more is needed.
Just a motion to continue.
Oh.
Personally, I would be comfortable approving, on first reading, approving this ordinance with exhibit B and getting the changes done for the second reading. But if we all want to take some more time to look at it, I'm fine with that.
I'm, I'm okay with that for a, for a, for a.
Is there a motion then? I move to approve ordinance number seven, series 2016, an ordinance of the city of Glenwood Springs, Colorado, amending section 070 dot 040 dot 090 and section 080 dot 060 dot 020 of the Glenwood Springs municipal code regarding classifications for the payment of system improvement fees include, within, including only exhibit B.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended.
Say it.
All right. We have a motion by Stephen and a second by Matt. Need further discussion? You may want to, okay. Oh, Kathy, that was old. I'm sorry.
Say something.
Say something. All right, let's go ahead and call the question.
Tucker, no. Davis, yes. Kathy, yes. Steph, yes. Kurt, yes. Most of us.
I don't know you. Do it.
All right. Thank you.
Probably not tonight. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I've got to do more homework. Put it in form that everyone else will understand.
So, uh, let me get myself organized here real quick. Okay. We need to find our other two.
Yeah, I think they're coming in.
Took, took Stephen's suggestion. That is supper club.
All right, sorry, that conversation took a little longer than. All right, next item on the agenda is a Fourth of July celebration update.
I don't think there are any materials in your packet on this. It's more just a verbal update. The, first of all, thank you very much to the Post Independent for starting to publicize the event. We have retained an event coordinator, and part of, part of the scope of work there is to, to solicit sponsorships, both cash and in-kind sponsorships, so that hopefully this position will pay for itself. That may or may not happen in the first year with 90 days to go before the event, but we at least set that out as a, a goal. Thank you very much for approving the grant to the Symphony of the Valley. That is not a contract for them to play. That is a donation to their nonprofit for the purposes that they requested the grant. That said, I know that that was helpful in securing their promise to play for an hour that evening, the evening of the Fourth of July. And that's a, that's just a very good repair of a relationship between that entity and the city. And we're very, very happy to have them back. So what the, what the, the reason this is on the agenda is not just to give you sort of program updates, but to explain that, like many of the other good ideas that you have, they cost money. And so I do have general fund funds available to, to at least cover the coordinator so that this event keeps moving forward. But there likely will be other expenses that we need budget for. So we either need to, you know, take, take from some parts of the general fund and add to this or, or not. But I wanted to bring it up because there's also, you know, there are seven of you, and that you've previously stated that there should be private contribution in this as well. That's the other reason for targeting sponsorship, so that you do get some private money in the project. And Catherine has been a real leader on this event, championing the event and the committee. We meet on Monday at three o'clock, I believe, upstairs, if anybody wants to, to say anything. So that's, that's a pretty fair update, I think. I didn't know if you had more to add.
No, that's a great update, Drew. Thank you. I, the only thing I would add is I've already been approached by a local business that would like to help with this, so, and I would just ask that if there are other businesses out there that would like to either volunteer people and/or money, money preferably right now, that, that they should either contact probably for, for the time being either you or I.
Yeah.
To get, to get this started. But we, it's, it's a great group. We've got a, we've got a great plan. It's, the idea is to start small and to grow this. And I think it is going to be a really, and it's going to be a really fun event.
And, I'm sorry, well, we're, we are, we are applying a general principle that we'd rather do fewer things and do them very well than to try to do many, many things and maybe do them well or maybe not. And you already should thank the Lions Club, who are, again, doing their firecracker run in the morning. You should thank Christina at the Center for the Arts, because we're using some economies of scale there with some of music, with some of the contracts there, and that includes, you know, waste handling and all of that. The permit's been secured, of course, for the park. And want to thank Chief Tillotson in the back there, who's already got, you know, fireworks lined up. And thank the Tourism Promotion Board, who dipped into their reserves to fund that. So there's already a great amount of positive momentum towards this. And Kathleen Vanitovich is a real professional, and I think you're going to like the result.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
Stephen?
Well, I just was going to say, if we're really, it seems to be the will of this council that we have fireworks again, and tourism did step up. But I would like to say to the community that that's just a baseline. And if you really want a fireworks display, it's incumbent upon you to add to that, because that is going to provide for about a 25-minute show, and that's about the size of it. And if you want a longer show, if you want more fireworks, you're going to have to pony up, because we can't do it all.
I think it's a 12-minute show right now.
All right, 12-minute show. So there you have it. Blink.
Are, are we going to those shorter Persian fireworks that, that aren't such a fire danger?
Yes.
Where we're headed?
Yes.
Okay, good. So it is hopefully something that's.
Low proximity, I think, low, low proximity.
Low proximity, yeah. And that, that's something that hopefully we can do year in, year out if we like it. And although it's not the big high ones that go up, it's a little less, a lot less fire danger.
Yeah, not, not only, not only, you know, that feature of the event, but we're going to poll on this. We think the Fourth of July event might be funded by the tourism tax. You know, it's a miniscule amount of that tax, but it is a dedicated financial commitment and a dedication to the event that's important.
Kathy?
I just wanted to address a little bit about the fireworks, and it is a low proximity. And Gary can step in if I want this. But the location has been designed by Gary to, to really be quite safe. I know that there, the only concern I've heard is about fire danger from, from the public. And, you know, Gary feels quite confident that, that the location is, it's got good boundaries and easy access, and that they should be in, in good shape. And I don't know if Gary wants to add anything to that, but it is, and the other thing is, is that it should go on, whether it's drying or not.
I would, I would just add what Catherine was saying. I would just add what Catherine was saying was that with a low proximity show, the, the entire show could be on the green irrigated grass to the east of the, of the orchestra shell there. So we'll be, we'll be, well, we'll be very, very resistant to whatever type of drought we might have. Get good access all the way around. But it's going to be, to, to use the vendor's words, an intimate show. You're not going to be able to watch it from Grand Avenue.
We'll be able to see it from linehouse?
Yeah, you will have to be in the proximity of the park to see the fireworks show.
So you actually have to go to the park, that's a good thing.
Yeah.
I mean, just some of the others.
The other, the other thing about the low proximity too, is that they are actually more expensive.
Yes, unfortunately, they're American-made product as opposed to the Chinese ones that we're familiar with. Because they have to function well at a lower altitude from a smaller diameter mortar, the precision with which they're made is, is, is higher, and therefore more costly. So 15-minute show, dollar for dollar, is much, much more expensive. So for the same amount of dollars, you're going to get a shorter duration show.
Thanks, Gary.
Thanks, Gary.
I just have a question for, for you, Cap. For businesses that may want to contribute or donate, is there any sort of?
Tax break?
Yeah, or any sort of, any sort of break for them or, or place that we can put their logos on? Or an advertising?
We are looking at probably sponsorship levels, similar to what the Chamber does for Strawberry Days, something like that, you know, where you can either sponsor the event or, you know, something like that.
So I got to believe, with all the good businesses around here, there's a lot that invests a lot in the community.
I'm sure, yeah, I'm sure there are, you know, so I, I think, I think we'll, I think we'll have some success with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Great, thank you Kathy and Drew for moving ahead forward. We appreciate that very much. I think it'll be a great benefit for the community, and I hope it's something that's the first of many. All right, moving on. Next item is the Wing Street Water Connection Budget and Agreements.
Hey.
Mr. Davis.
I have a business conflict, so I'm going to push back or I.
We've refused.
So in your packet is a, a letter that staff has gone through several iterations on advising the, the residents or the owners of the properties on the Wing Streets between Seventh and Eighth along Grand Avenue. We are going to upgrade everybody's service to a four-inch. The majority of those are going to be stopped outside the foundation wall. We've got various, various people in various stages of decision-making regarding penetrating the wall. I can tell you, Brad, Zach, Dokman and I have been under the basements of several of these buildings this week, and boy, this is, this is going to be a challenge. Very much.
Penetrating or just even getting close to it?
You know, the, the water services for the Sweet Shop and Book Train actually cross the, the, the building to the north is the Sweet Shop. Their curb stop is south of the Book Trains. They cross somewhere underneath the building. It is literally a crawl space. Skinny Brad can get to the front of the building, Fat Robin cannot. So, you know, the, the difficulty of getting a plumber in there and getting down to grade in the future is going to be quite a challenge. We're, we're trying to work this out. As we go, people are getting various ideas about what they would like to do, what they would not like to do. We've given them two options. Either you want to penetrate now or you don't. Mr. Bellio has suggested he would do the penetration work himself, and we're trying to figure that out. His curb stop box is 20 feet north of where the service comes through the exterior wall. So I don't know exactly what's going on there, but we're going to make a lot of discovery. Right now, we're, we're budgeting this at, at around $94,000. Based on what I've seen in the last few days, we may wind up spending a little more money in some cases. We're going to have to get some additional parts and run some longer services, so.
In, in the case of properties that are planning on, on penetrating their foundation wall, is there any reason, and I guess even going to the extent of hooking it up, is there any reason why we don't clean up the location of their curb stop? In other words, just move their curb stop so that it's?
Where we can do that, we are absolutely trying to do that. The, the Sweet Shop and the Book Train, where there's just no opportunity to go anywhere. It's, we almost have to tie back onto those as soon as, if we can get through the wall, and those decisions have yet to be made.
After, go, go ahead.
It, it's just a lot more complex than what I think any of us thought at first blush until we got down there and started looking at stuff.
I guess that goes to, I mean, that's kind of maybe why it's a good idea to do it now, because if somebody did have to go figure out the maze on their own when we've got a nice finished surface there, they could be digging up a lot of ground.
Well, we, we had a very similar idea a number of years ago when we replaced the water line on the east Wing Street. We ran services to potentially feed what's the narcissus in the, the building to the north of that. They were never connected. They're still fed off of, of the building that bulge, bulge owns on the corner. So we are going, again, going to provision those services to segregate them. I think that's the right thing to do going forward, so we're going to try. It's, the deeper we get, the more complex it gets and the more issues we're, we're discovering, so.
That's what happens when you're dealing with 120-year-old, 130-year-old structures, you know. I'd be surprised if we don't, well, I think we've cleaned up all the sewers that drain directly to the river, so.
I think we have.
Basically explaining to the public why we're doing this and what the costs are. Is there anything we have to do here? I mean?
Well, we, we do not have this money budgeted, so we need some sort of, you know, the last time we spoke about this, because of timing, it was sort of an emergency declaration on the council's part. I've had some discussion with the finance director. He wanted to put this as the Grand Avenue Bridge expense. Utility is going to have to, to track this and collect money over time as people collect, or as people hook up to it. So I, I want that money to come back into the utility fund, because if it comes back into the general fund, it's just miscellaneous revenue.
I, I can speak.
Some sort of resolution?
Yeah, you're going to have a, you'll have a budget resolution that will cover this, the Fourth of July, finance, software, quite a few cleanup items here.
Okay, well, this budget, these monies will come out of the capital funds, out of water?
Out of water, yes. So let's make sure we include what Robin just suggested, that we include language to direct that stream back into those appropriate places.
I will, and I'll also include the mayor's observation from this morning that we need to have cost escalation based on Consumer Price Index over time.
Yes, yep.
Robin, I, oh, sorry, I have a, I have a question for you. When do property owners need to notify, is it you, that they would like to, go ahead and make that?
We were asking them to notify Brad, and that was last week. The work has begun.
Everyone knows up and down the street.
Well, what, what we have done, because we, we have not got, we haven't got as much participation as we would hoped. Where if people think it's a good idea, their, their difficulty is, I've got to replace my boiler, or do I do this? I can't do both. So what are we doing? One of the, one of the customers out there has, has, has stated that they would really like to do this now. They understand the benefit, and they would like us to finance it over a 10-year term.
Over how long?
A 10-year term.
10-year?
You know, we, we do payment agreements with customers that can't afford their water bill or their electric bill. I'm not sure this is a whole lot different, and I'm not so sure that this doesn't make us act like a bank, which I'm not sure we should be doing. But, you know, we've got one opportunity to get this done and preserve the, the improvements on the surface. That's the whole point, that we're, we're, we're trying to avoid tearing up while we're spending $125 million accomplishing, so.
For that reason, I was wondering if we could, you know, if people notify you by next week, if we could offer them a discount. Rather than, yeah, I mean, we've got the, the additional $1,500 tab later after the fact, but if we say, you know, one time only, this is what we'd like to do, to incentivize people to actually.
I understand that, but the, the rest of the ratepayers may not see it in that same light. So it's a fairness issue. This is the utility. It's not a general fund, so there, some of the nexus is a little more sticky, I guess, is what I want to say. You know, we, we bought a little more time. We have got Google just installing the main, installing the Ts and vowels. So they'll get the main done. They will pressure test that, backseat, and then we'll go back and start tying services. So they're only making about 20 feet a day. I mean, it is slow-going. There is a lot of obstructions, a lot of last-minute fieldwork details and changes that are going on out there. So we've, we've got a little time, but we're, we are trying to press people to, to make a decision. We've got some people who said, I don't want a four-inch in my building. It, my three-quarter inch runs all the way under my outside wall to the back of the building, and that's where the service is. And he goes, I'm never going to tear this building up today, get that four-inch back there in the back.
Or if they do, a tenant will pay for those changes.
Yeah.
At least agree that.
Yeah, but, you know, everything changes with time. So our, our plan is to move forward on the original concept that we're going to replace every service with a four-inch.
It's a good idea and probably the right thing to do, but I don't think we should get too twisted about what the owners are going to do.
give too twist about what the owners are gonna do. Those are all personal economic decisions, and I think a lot of that's turned by the economic use of the property, so.
Well, I agree with that, but I think Robin's right in that we're doing the right thing to get it to them, to their outside wall. And then we have to insist that, over time, we have to insist that there are only recourses to core their wall, their wall from inside, so that there's no disturbance to the finished product outside.
What's the real risk? I mean, fire code changes, that would be the biggest thing by my, in the future.
Yeah, that's, a lot of the property owners have asked us that very question, why are you doing this? And the fire code is the primary driver. Then if you have to sprinkle that building, if somebody buys a couple and wants to remodel them into something else and they require a sprinkler system, then there you go.
Is it in the future?
Yeah, but the cost in the future, we didn't do this work now, but being the tens of thousands of dollars, five or six thousand dollars.
Right, and not to mention the disruption to the surface of your, you know...
Taking advantage of the timing.
Really, it's great, but you can't make a property owner do this, so I don't understand why we're asking.
We're not trying to pressure people into, we are just making sure that they understand the opportunity and the potential savings. What they decide to do is fine with me.
The only problem is the letter in the paper a few weeks ago, that basically said the writer said that the city was forcing them to do this, and I think that's incorrect. Just wondering if there's a, for those playing at home, just playing at home.
Yeah, we're just trying to make sure they understand the opportunity and what we're trying to do. What they wanna do at this point in time is their decision. We're not condemning anybody.
Okay. So, I've got a question, Drew or Carl, this is identified here for action. What is the action we're trying to take tonight?
I don't know why it was identified that way, honestly. I think it's more of an update and recognizing that you're gonna have a budget amendment coming up.
So, you're not looking for a motion tonight?
I don't think so. I think we've captured your requested changes.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Robin?
Thank you for doing this, I appreciate it.
Don't get stuck in that call.
Again.
Can't, so that really happened.
All right. Moving on, the next item is our 2016 Spring Cleanup and Alternatives. We have a discussion and potential action on this item.
Councilors, in your materials, Dave Betley prepared a report on the program from prior years. There's not a lot there that I wanna point to. If Dave wants to comment, he's here to do that. I think that the bigger issue is the future of the program. And I've been a Glenwood resident for five years, I think my comments come as much from direct observation as from any other source. I recognize that this is a very popular program. I think that, I've never seen it done anywhere else. I know that there are champions for the program. I think there is also, however, a lot of concern about the program and whether or not it should continue in its current form, and quite candidly, whether it can, should continue at all. And I had, I have had some discussions with some of you, and there was enough of concern, I guess is the word, about this year's program to delay our regular advertising efforts and publication of schedules and maps and so forth that normally would have been done in the last couple of weeks, to delay those activities until tonight, so that you could decide whether this program would continue this season or not. I do think there is a sense that, just given the popularity of the program and the history of the program, it may be, may be too late this season to not go through with it. But, that there are some common sense alternatives that will be a fair use of the tax funds you've dedicated to this program going forward. Garfield County is a reasonable model as an alternative. You probably received in your mail a coupon commemorating Earth Day that's good for a certain dollar amount for disposal at the Garfield County, West Garfield County landfill. And you operate a landfill at South Canyon. That would be a very easy way to keep this service running to your citizens, as long as you took some steps to help people who might need more help, disabled, elderly, others. And the other concern is that your car program is being abused. It's being abused by some of your citizens, it's being abused by non-residents who simply carted their junk into our jurisdiction and dump it, knowing that you will, every spring, clean it up, even though it's not really yours to clean up. There's also concern about what it does to the town for the time it takes to execute the program. And, you know, for what may be, with the very best intentions, a two-week program, or please only put your junk out during this week and we'll be back the very next week to clean it up, you know, the fact of the matter is, and this is sort of anecdotal evidence, the town looks terrible for a good six weeks, and everybody drives by saying, "When are they gonna pick this up? When are they gonna pick this up?" I promise you, it's nothing to matter with our professional staff, they work really hard, and ultimately, it all gets picked up and hauled away and so forth, except the, you know, the abusive stuff that they have to dispose of a different way. But, I will go on record right now recommending that you discontinue the program after this year. That is my recommendation personally, that's my recommendation professionally, and that we spend, we spend the allocated budget funds or some variation thereof to convert the program to the same sort of voucher system that would meet the need in a different way, or meet most of the need in a different way. So, that's why it's on the agenda tonight. Thank you.
Well, I just, can I say something? Are we gonna open this up to the public first, or?
Yep.
I'll...
Okay. All right. Is anyone from the public would like to speak about this?
I've been hearing rumors, I'm Pat Gratus, I live at thirteen seventeen miles. I have been hearing rumors that you're thinking of discontinuing it. I think it's the wrong thing to do. People in the springtime like to cut their brush, make the town more attractive, and we're endeavoring to have a beautiful town. We've done extensive work down on Seventh Street and up Main Street as well. I think that if you discontinue this program, people will be less likely to cut their brush, trim their trees, because it's very expensive to take things to the dump. It would be nice to have the same system as the county has, except that some people don't have transportation to take these things to the dump. I, for one, am a senior citizen. I have quite a bit of brush on the city rideaway, on the city property that I continue to trim for the city. The property, I have twenty feet back from the street to my lot line. The city will not do anything about the weed control, there's an uncontrollable weed down there. They no longer will, so, will spray it for me. I can't spray it. I can't afford to pay someone two hundred dollars to spray it, and I have continued to cut the trees, and I notice a lot of other people have, and they've piled them on the street. If you should cancel it for this year, the town's going to look terrible for the next year. So, I would recommend that you think about it, and think about the poor people, think about the handicapped people, and that sort of thing, when you discontinue a service like this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ma'am?
Good evening. My camera, God help me.
Yes.
My name's Rhonda Henry, I live at eight-twenty Palmer, the original town site. And first of all, I want to say that this annual cleanup is probably one of the few things that I benefit from my taxes to the city. I'm single, I have an older home, I am elderly and disabled, and I am partially employed, and I've lived in the same three-block area for thirty-seven years. And when they switched the schedule around, it kinda threw everybody off. And actually, I heard a few weeks ago that the schedule, I called a friend to look it up, and he gave me the dates that they were supposed to pick up. And particularly, I kind of police that side of town for bears and other kinds of things. The stuff is already there, and I will agree that it is abused when people put out plastics that they could recycle, cardboard, and, you know, there's construction waste and stuff like that, that there are people who do abuse it. The fun thing about it is when people put stuff out and you see them going by and picking it up, and it's a great form of recycling, some of it, but I will agree that it is abused. I think we can do a lot more to improve it. One is by having notices in the paper. I only heard about this meeting by word of mouth, and, you know, came here after another meeting just to speak to this. But I've talked to a number of my neighbors, and they're like, "Well, what are we gonna do with this stuff now?" I think that this city cleanup does more for the town than a lot of the other things, the internet, you know, the kids who I walked by who were smoking dope in the park using the city internet, burning up fifty thousand dollars' worth of fireworks in fifteen minutes, really. The one that gets my goat the most is the street sweeper, which is absolutely worthless. So, I am in agreement with this woman that the program should continue. I think people need to be told. I mean, there's huge TV, and I'm like, "Who's TV?" So, you can't leave that out there, you know, so the city doesn't have to waste their time. Because I know it's taken longer and longer and longer, but I think it's because people, people are abusing it. And if that were to stop, it could remain a really good program. I see a lot of people on that side of town, tourists, who come and look around, and they're mostly in the old part of Glenwood, because it's, because it's the best part of Glenwood, right? And it's probably the hardest to maintain, because my house is a hundred and twenty years old, my cabin is a hundred and twenty years old. But I think that it does more for the city to keep up that appearance and to help people with that than to just totally negate it. But there needs to be communication, because the last few years, I've had to call the city and ask. And I have been in fear the last few years that they were gonna quit doing it, because I realize it costs a lot of money. But I think it's money well spent if it can get tightened up, and I will continue to police my neighborhood and tell them to knock it off. It doesn't do much good, though. Tickets work way better, particularly with the bears. But anyway, thank you for listening, I appreciate it, and I really hope it can continue this, because a lot of people, a lot of people don't abuse it and are good above it, so thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this subject?
Dave?
Mr. Straub.
Fault, actually. I don't normally do this, because, and I'm not doing this as a reporter, John Straub from Carbondale. And I just wanna, just wanna let you know from Carbondale's perspective, as a Carbondale resident, they do a cleanup where people bring their stuff to a certain, it was, a park not across from town hall there, and there's a fee charged. It's more for out-of-town residents than it is for in-town residents. In fact, they may restrict it just to in-town residents, I'm not sure. But you bring your stuff that you wanna get rid of, and they have the dump trucks there to haul it off, and big dumpsters. So, it's just another option as you look at possible tweaks to the way it's done now in the future.
I really do appreciate that, and I wanna amplify the comments that I made, that there are ways to make allowances for both of tonight's speakers to accommodate them beyond just a coupon in the mailbox. So, I wanna be really clear that that's part of my proposal as well.
All right. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak about this, on this topic? No? All right. We'll close the public comment portion and bring it back to the council.
Are we, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask Dave to, real quickly, if you would, because I imagine you probably know him off the top of your head, could you kinda run through what our current rules are regarding this, and then what do we do to enforce them? And I understand that enforcement is difficult, but if you could just give us kind of a summary of that information?
Well, the amount is five cubic yards, so, which is pretty hard for people to judge. Most people don't understand five cubic yards fits in the front of a bucket loader. So, there are no, we don't haul away appliances or TVs or anything of that nature. They're not allowed to put paints or oils or stuff like that in. What we find is, is sometimes residents will try and hide that into the mix of branches and stuff like that. You know, I know there's some, maybe Robin can comment on this a little bit more too, but I know we're getting, you know, the segregation of the materials too is becoming more prominent as far as the landfill goes. So, we've gotta separate out brush for chipping and stuff of that nature, and the construction materials and stuff like that. So, that's become more of an important topic to the situation also.
Do we, have we asked in the past for people to segregate their piles, yard waste versus running waste?
We do. And so, what we do is, Rick will go out and notify people in advance of when we're gonna be there. The street crews will go out and kind of inspect the trash piles and do the best they can to segregate stuff as we're coming into the neighborhoods. And then if there's, if there's problems with materials that aren't there or something, we have the rules and regulations, we'll post those on the door, get those to the residents and remind them of what they've got. If push comes to shove, we can get code enforcement involved to cite people if there's too much out there, or, you know, there's always the consternation of some, you know, we service mostly single-family homes and stuff like that, so we don't, we try not to pick up stuff from multifamily developments and stuff like that. So, a lot of times, there's some properties on the south end of town, we'll get piles, just community piles instead of piles associated with the residents, and so we try and notify people of that and let them know what the rules and regulations are. But it does take time, you know, and so this two-week program starts stretching out to four weeks or six weeks, and, you know, people start getting upset with the trash being there and stuff, and so it creates a little bit of heartache.
And so, that, I guess that was one of my other questions, do we mandate that they not put trash out before a certain timeframe, or is it just a request?
They're not supposed to put it out in advance, you know, and, but, you know, there's this expectation now that...
People are already cleaning it out right now.
Yeah, yeah.
You need to announce.
You know, there's a, I think it's Cooper Ninth, there's a big pile there of mattresses and stuff, and, you know, we try to ask people not to, but we don't have much control over that. I mean, we could get code enforcement involved and go out and start citing people, but like you say, I mean, we, you know, we've kind of, this year's kind of unique, because we've kind of put a halt to kind of have this discussion and see what we're going to do. of put a halt to kind of have this discussion and see what we're going to do. So I think people were kind of in anticipation of getting the, or starting the program, so we've kind of put it on hold for a week or so before we could. So I don't, I don't know if it's so much trying to get people not to put their trash out, at least this year, because, you know, some of that's our responsibility, putting this on hold and having this discussion.
Right. All right. Do we have the ability to, I mean, say we put a notice in the paper or whatever that says, okay, we're picking up this neighborhood on this date, you can put your trash out a maximum of one week before the scheduled pickup date. Do we have the ability to go and fine people for putting it out?
We do have the authority to, code enforcement could take the time to do that. I might suggest that that turns into more of a political matter for you than it does code enforcement matter relatively quickly.
And our zones do change, too, so they kind of rotate. So we'll start in one area a certain year, then that area changes the next year, so...
Our rules and regulations do specify when we're going to be in what neighborhood and what zone, and we ask that you do not place stuff out until the beginning of that day for that zone. Just like Leo said, you can go to any quadrant in the city, and lots of people have put a lot of stuff out.
I guess my thought is, I understand and appreciate that this is a well-liked program. My wife is a big proponent of it, and I may not, if I were to cancel it, I might have to find someplace else to go tonight. But I, it seems that maybe, you know, we need to throw a little more, you know, and, you know, I understand there's a political component to trying to enforce some of these things, but...
Mike, some of the problem, too, is people coming in from out of town. We have people come in, and, you know, I mean, the resident may be in compliance.
Right.
We've had people that come in and will dump stuff over the night.
And I, yeah, exactly. If you don't see them dumping it, how do you enforce it?
Well, we've got to get the citizens to engage, because they will oftentimes tell us after the fact that, yeah, I saw some guy with a truck, or a trailer pull up and just throw all that stuff in my yard.
And that's exactly my thought, is that, you know, we set the fine for dumping, if you're not a resident in the city, set it at five thousand dollars or something significant, you know? And, you know, it's like, okay, maybe we arrest thirty people, we get one hundred and fifty thousand bucks, and we pay for the program. I'm joking, but...
I always got so many friends.
They would need to engage the community, to faithfully ignore if you see someone dumping their neighborhood. They would need to report that, take photos of the truck, and play a...
Sometimes it happens, though, at night.
I know, I know.
I have people, you know, say they put out a pile, and the next morning, they come out and there's old tires.
Yeah, I had that happen in front of my house last year, where someone in the middle and I dumped some stuff there, and I didn't even hear them. But, yeah, it happens, but I think if you set the fines at something very prohibitive, that if you get caught doing it, you know, it's not going to be a slap on the wrist and a hundred bucks or whatever, it's going to be a very serious penalty.
And some of the problems, really, too, is, like I say, community piles, you know? All of a sudden, it'll just show up, and then nobody knows where it came from, nobody knows what it is, and we don't have any recourse but to haul it off, because if we leave it there, it's just going to be, in a light, right away, it becomes a public nuisance. So we do have certain situations where it's hard to do that.
Yeah. There's, yes, yes. Leo?
Okay. You know, I'm just looking at your report here, and I don't have questions for you. I'm kind of going to be right to general comment, so if you want to sit down.
All right, so we have the seasoned employee. Walk to the back.
Okay, got you.
I'll say some more.
You know, looking at, since 2009, we've spent close to a million dollars doing this. That's coming out of our general fund, isn't it? You know, I have to say, personally, I love the ability to look at my garage, oh, my God, how I can get that out to that curb, because, you know, it's a great service. From one standpoint, I think it does, I couldn't agree more with some of the things I heard tonight from the public. However, I think our task has to be, we have to make the hard decisions, whether it's building a bridge or cutting a road. And I think this is one of those hard decisions that, you know, we have to look at seriously, whether it's for this year or down the road. A hundred and twenty thousand dollars out of 2015's budget is significant. I mean, there are other ways to spend that money and get a similar service to the people without that kind of cost. I couldn't echo some of Drew's statements anymore so that I will, in that this city looks crappy for a good six weeks. There hasn't been any dates posted yet for when it's okay to put your trash out this year, and people are already doing it. And despite the city's efforts over the last seven years since I've been involved, we advertise pretty extensively what the days are, what's acceptable and what's not acceptable. This is one of those programs where, you know, you can't go out and you can't spoon-feed every resident the information that they need, and so at some point, you have to trust that we're going to get the message out there and put the onus on them. And that's not, so, I personally, even though I think some of my neighbors would really be upset with me, I'd be more supportive of some sort of voucher system, taking into account those that can't quite make the journey, but, you know, I think we can do better than this. And I don't know that cutting it this year at this late hour makes sense, but I'm not running for reelection anymore, so, you know, that's not my consideration.
Your mention of the bridge matters a lot. Every one of your major initiatives deals with the future of Glenwood and its improvement in infrastructure, in its appearance, in every aspect of living here. And that's specifically 8th Street, the Confluence, 6th Street corridor, North Glenwood, master plan, a shuttle, and trying to establish all the connections around the town. It doesn't make sense to me to invite people to this new and improved community, and for these six weeks in the spring, it looks like a war zone. That is just inconsistent with your larger policy about the future of Glenwood.
Why we've been doing all this, I've been doing a little research. It seems like a fair number of towns actually do a spring cleanup just like we do. Yuma, Edgewater, Aspen, Brumfield, Delta, Durango, Grand Junction seem to do something like we're doing. To cancel it this year, I think would be a mistake. I think that we'd be tarred and feathered, and then tarred and feathered again. This is extraordinarily popular program in town, although I think we've done ourselves a disservice by publishing dates and the schedule that we can't keep. So if we're going to do it this year, let's publish a schedule and dates that we can keep, let's spread this thing out, let's not have stuff sitting on in the right of ways or whatever, or, I think my stuff was out there, I put it out the week it was supposed to be put out there, and it sat there for three weeks. That's no good. We need a better, that needs to be managed better. And if you have to add buffer times in there or do whatever you need to do, do it. There's no reason people should have stuff sitting out there for weeks on end. I think that's part of the problem. The other part of the problem is rules have changed, laws have changed, it makes it much more expensive to handle hazardous waste and certain recyclables. So I think we do need some code enforcement in that area. And I think people are becoming aware of that. This is a transition time. I mean, three years ago, this stuff didn't really cost anything, now it costs money. People understand, people are starting to understand that it costs money and they're looking for ways to get around it, but I think it needs to be part of the culture that this is something you have to pay for, you know, this isn't free. So I think we can do ourselves better by simply, you know, doing a little better, more code enforcement in that regard. I'd be very careful with this. We talked about this five or six years ago, and it started a firestorm. It was very scary. So before we decide, it's just cheaper just to get rid of it, let's cancel it, let's spend more money on other things, let's understand what the impacts are going to be here. And there's nothing wrong with thinking politically, you'll see if you cancel this, the firestorm that it may create. So those are my thoughts on the subject. It is not rare, but it does seem to be unique to Colorado, that's for sure. So, I say try lightly.
Thanks, Matt. Steven?
I have to say, when I look at the report that Dave put together, and it's a good report, and I appreciate that, but the problem I have with it is all of the, all of the language about abuse is anecdotal. There is no hard figure here. And when I look at the expenditure we've made over the last ten years or whatever it is, we're talking about the cost of two studies a year that we could do without. We're talking about the best value that we get for our buck in terms of sprucing the town up, and I would submit, based on the figures in your chart, that probably the amount of abuse is five percent or less, and it doesn't seem to have escalated. And so I think this is a tempest in a teapot. I think in order to keep a town beautiful, you have to go and do these kinds of things in order to give everyone who's here an equal opportunity to keep their properties in good repair and keep them cleaned. And, yes, it might make the town unsightly in a short period of time on a shoulder season, but it means that during the bulk of the high tourist season in the summer, you have a spotless town, and people really take notice of that. And I believe this is one of the best bargains going. So I'm unalterably opposed to doing away with this. I think it pays big dividends for the city.
And Steve, just let me clarify, the report was never meant to give options. It was meant just to be informational on what we deal with with the streets to...
Pardon?
Said the report was never meant to be, it never meant, it came up with options. It was meant to be informational to let you know some of the...
I understand that, Dave, but I'm just saying, based on the figures that I'm looking at here, it's, the cost has remained relatively constant from 2009 through 2015, and it seems like a great bargain.
We wouldn't be talking about it if there wasn't somebody content to seriously modify or...
I'm not saying we can't do some code enforcement. I'm not saying that that's not a good option to add to it. And I'm also not saying that we can't, if we need to look for a different source of the funds, if we want to not do it out of the street tax fund, and we want to look somewhere else for that money, that's an option as well. I'm just saying, for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, you can't clean up a town as well as we do this one. It's just, it works really well, and I think it's, again, as I've said in many meetings, we have a growing population in Glenwood Springs. We've become a destination for retirees, and a lot of those people don't have the wherewithal to do this, and a voucher's not going to work for them. Now, some people on this council have suggested we turn our gaze to volunteer groups to volunteer to help these people, and that might work, but it's not as coordinated an effort, and it doesn't get things done as well and as quickly as this does.
Thank you, Steven. Kathy?
Well, I think, you guys have made some good points. I would echo that we need a realistic schedule, whether it's over two months or whatever. We, you know, I think that we're going to enforce that you can't put your stuff out by whenever the deadline is. I also agree that, at this point, I don't think that we can cancel it for this year, but there's the expectation based on history that goes with it, and I think we're too late. If we wanted to cancel it, we should have done it in January. I think part of the issue is going to be getting really good information out, do a PR blitz or whatever, we need to do advertising to get information out to the public, what is allowed, examples of what five yards looks like, you know, somehow photos, pictures, whatever. The other thing is encourage sort of a neighborhood watch, if you will, you know? It's like, everybody, you know, keep an eye out for strange vehicles in the neighborhood that might be dumping, and report them, you know? And I think that's part of the problem. Carrie Wilson always has a problem with people calling him three weeks after the fact to let him know that something happened three weeks ago. Doesn't do much good. Can't do much about that. So if you see something, report it. And I do think we need some options for seniors and elderly, you know? And I did suggest possibly using RSVP or, you know, the volunteer program, but we may need something that is a little more coordinated than that.
Thank you, Kathy. Leo?
I just wanted to maybe respond to something Steven said in terms of the cost. I take your point, and I understand your point about the dollar value compared to, you know, some of the bigger ticket items that we do, and I don't, I think that's a valid point, but I also think that if you look at, if you look at 2015 alone or 2014 alone, and think about, were there some things that we could have used a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars or a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in our general budget towards? And I think of things, what comes to my mind is, well, that's, that would go a long ways to funding a route to South Millland. I'm sorry, to South, to minor town. You know, I, there are portions of the city, not just in my ward, but in Matt's ward, that are underserved by some city services. And when I see this kind of, these kind of figures put together, I think, well, yeah, we do spend money on big studies, and that's about our point, but I also think that there are other ways that we could spend our money a little bit more smartly, and I just, I think of it from that context. And I don't disagree that this is a good service, that this does pay dividends to the city in terms of how it looks and all that, but, you know, I just, I got to wonder if there isn't a better way, that's all.
There may be. With the current schedule, I've done this now for ten years, and I don't think it's actually been picked up. Maybe one year was picked up at Red Peak, but it's never, and the other nine years have passed now. And I think last year was a year of forceful work, so I think it was terrible, it's there. That is not...
I was just looking at Grand Junction's website about their spring cleanup, and what I noticed at the very bottom of that page, one single line that said, it had to do with, when it's your week, that's your week you can put out your garbage. If you put it out any earlier, you get a thousand dollar fine. So my suggestion is, if a way to maybe manage this more would be put the onus on the owners to not put stuff out.
Yeah, you know, and I wrote down every single idea, including the jurisdictions that, other jurisdictions that do this, and I appreciate that it's a great bargain, and I appreciate that it's shoulder season and we're doing this, but just take, just take on its face what you're saying, that we need to manage the program better, we need to pick it up quicker. I'll just sort of recall the work session regarding snow removal, where the Public Works Director was presenting you staffing statistics that you haven't added an FTE in streets since 1985. So if it wants to be picked up quicker, you know... So if it wants to be picked up quicker, you know, a 10% success rate that, that the councilman cited is not a success rate, that's a 90% failure rate. And, and that if you want to increase the service, you know, then you're going to increase the cost. We're going to put more bodies on it, divert people in streets from other projects so that one week equals one week. You know, you're going to increase patrol and, and, you know, the tickets and the courts, I mean, all of that, mainly the streets people. So now it's not a hundred and thirty-five thousand, or a hundred and twenty-five, it's a hundred and sixty-five or whatever, whatever it increases to. So...
That makes sense, but do not underestimate how popular this program is. Do not underestimate what, what may happen if we decide to not do this anymore.
Yeah.
This is a big deal for lots of members of the community. Down this road once before, it wasn't very great. That's all I have to say.
So there seems to be some consensus of doing it, doing this program this year, and unless we're looking for a two-hour work session, and I would say the rest of this discussion belongs in the work session, or we're gonna, unless we're gonna hash this out till 11 o'clock, because it's going to be an hour before everybody gets all their comments in. And I think there's probably some really good ideas that can maybe save this program and make it work. There's probably some senior options with senior vouchers that can make it work. There's lots of ideas. So I'm just...
Can we do a work session after this cleanup period's over, or should we do a...
Yeah. Fresh on everybody's mind, and keep an eye on what's happening, and get us some real good, fresh information, and then let's have a work session about it once it's over, see what we liked, didn't like, what worked, what didn't work. But let's do it this year, and move on to the next subjects we can go on. It's 10 o'clock.
I got one comment.
Okay, Mr. Davis.
Well, I haven't commented yet, everybody else has had such great comments, but, you know, it certainly is a, is a really popular program that I think would be very difficult to kill, but it has huge problems. The problems are, you know, people putting out things that are inappropriate in the street, not paying attention to the times when it is appropriate to put it out, people bringing things in by the truckloads from out of town. If we're going to do this another year, we need to work together as a community to try to police this a little better. I think it's a burden on code enforcement, but we need to do a little more code enforcement. We need to knock on some doors and rattle some cages and put out some fines, and try to maybe retrain the public to do this appropriately if they want to continue with this service. Otherwise, there's no way that I could see being able to continue with this service. It's a really, really hard thing to police. Right now, on Mayor Gamba's property at 13th and, and, no, 10th and, and Midland, there's a truck and a trailer piled high with garbage that, as I came here this evening, I just knew for sure it was going to end up on the street somewhere tonight. That's my comment.
Not my truck.
My, yeah, but too, you know, the, the street staff is, Drew had pointed that out, you know, I mean, it's kind of the same issue we went through with snow removal. I mean, if, if we want to look at faster removal and stuff of that nature, is it something that we consider a contractor to help us out with those kind of situations, the same as we do with snow removal? So, you know, I mean, our, our street crews don't come off with different projects. They stay concentrated, the whole crew stays concentrated on this until it's done.
Wow.
One thought that I had, I think Kathy mentioned it, is, because effectively, we, for these costs that we've listed since 2009, you've picked up all of town. It just takes longer than what we scheduled, so without increasing costs, we just maybe divide it up into more areas and, and, and schedule, you know, spread that schedule out. And that might achieve the purpose of, you know, that way, the whole town isn't looking trashy for four to six weeks. We got individual areas, you know?
Sure.
And I completely agree with the comments about code enforcement. I'd like to understand what our, what is our current fine for, if we can find someone for putting it out early? Carl, do you have any idea when, what our fine might be if...
Your fine is a maximum of a thousand dollars and a year in jail, and that can be, that thousand dollar fine can accumulate on a daily basis.
Okay, well, I, I mean, I'm not necessarily saying this first year, let's, let's fine a bunch of people, but I'm saying, let's certainly notice, notify them. Right now, there are truck piles all over town, and, and they're in violation of that, I guess.
I'll send you jail time.
On that note, I think we have direction.
Did you get that, John, your homework, or thinking jail time?
The, you know, one more thing I'd like to say, Dave, Dave, while you're still standing there as a target. The biggest embarrassment to this community is along Highway 82. It's where we are the gateway to the Roaring Fork Valley. Last year, the piles on Grand Avenue sat there for weeks, and I think that if, you know, maybe there isn't just one time that we run down and pick up Grand Avenue at a, at a specific time. I think that the crew ought to, you know, as they head out in the morning, on every Monday, they ought to pick up Grand Avenue, because that's a direct reflection on our community as a whole, and that's seen by people that don't get into our neighborhoods. If we want to, you know, pile up our neighborhood streets and live that way, then that's our decision, but as these people travel through our community, the gateway to the Roaring Fork Valley, we ought to try to keep that cleaned up.
And, and I respect, respect your comments, Steve. The one thing that I would have concerns about on that is, is if we went down and made it a purpose to pick up Grand Avenue, one thing that I'd be afraid of is if we started doing that, people would start bringing more stuff there. So I'm, what part of this, this schedule is, is if we started doing that, is would it draw more trash and stuff to that area as we're trying to keep continually to pick that up? And I don't know, I can't answer that, yeah.
I understand the problems, the challenges. There isn't a good answer, except for Drew's answer.
That's on the record. No, I appreciate all the comments, and...
And Robata and Lafayette, and Thornton actually discontinued our, and I respect on their website about this discussion.
Well, I think, I think the, do we need to take action?
No, I got it. I think spring, I understand, it would have taken an affirmative action, I think, to cancel this year's spring cleanup. It's budgeted, we'll move forward now with all the direction, and I will schedule a work session to debrief after this season.
Okay.
Can I just make one more comment? I'd like to just thank the Streets Department for, for doing this. I mean, it's got to be a dirty, dirty job, so.
Thank you, Kathy.
Express my thanks, thanks.
All right, Robin.
Just one little clarification. You know, the schedule start is, is a box. We need to get these things advertised, get it back up on our website. I understand the desire to extend time. I'm not sure what changes you all want us to make for this year.
Realistic, probably?
Yeah, I guess I would just say if, if we, if, I don't know how many areas we have now, but if we know we've, we've been unable to meet that schedule, then let's just calculate if we need to break it up into some smaller subareas.
We have five zones now.
We'll talk about it tomorrow.
Okay, okay.
Well, maybe in your advertising, you know, help a little bit with bolder print on what the rules are and...
And, and the fine for, for putting it out there early, and I think code enforcement ought to go around right now and put a notice on every single door for every pile that's in town. I mean, I don't think it'd take that long, and just say...
Get Janie on it.
What's that?
Done by lunch.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. And then, you know, let them know that, you know, you're early, and, and it's a potential thousand dollar fine per day, and...
And then they'll call City Hall and say, good, come pick it up. And then they'll say, you're too early, and then they'll say, come pick it up.
And then we'll say, get off the street, or it's a thousand dollar...
Okay, we, we understand. Thank you, Kathy.
Thanks.
Thanks.
All right. Almost, we have to, we have the report from the City Manager and City Attorney.
I just refer the public to the pre-meeting this morning, which is available online and on the YouTube channel. I gave a pretty lengthy and detailed report. I have some news since then. We did get notified from GOCO that we did, in fact, receive our forty thousand dollars for the Parks and Rec Master Plan update. So that's a, that's a three to one return to Glenwood citizens on the dollar for those planning efforts. And the corresponding reminder that the two-thirds of the focus there is a business study and a refreshing of our 2006 plan. The big news from the morning session is that May 16 is the expected start date for the North-South Connector Shuttle. We have great thanks to RAFTA, who are heavily subsidizing that effort, and that the approximate cost for the 2015 budget will be seventy thousand. That'll be part of the budget supplement that we will present to you. We are exploring a future of the recycle center that service in its current location will be moved. That's our current plan. And the reason that it needs to be moved is because of the land swap with RE1, and our hope is to keep it as close to the existing location as we can. That involves some private negotiations, and otherwise, we'll explore locations on other city-owned property, either on Deveraux Road or out by the airport. That is, for the rest, please just refer to the morning session. Thank you.
Carl? Sure. I believe at the next RAFTA board meeting, they're going to be considering the IGA and attachments related to Eighth Street that we've been working on. That'll come to you at the following meeting for us, a week later. So that's great, we're getting that wrapped up. I had provided an update to the School Board a little while back, have provided them with a copy of the, the IGA with them for the land swap related to Confluence area. I'm hopeful that we will have comments back and be able to have, take action on that as well at the next meeting. So a couple of the big things going on in the Confluence area, we're getting, we're moving forward and getting wrapped up. Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you want me to update the City Manager's search process, or if you want to do that.
I, I, go ahead, because I forgot to do that in the council comments.
So, City Council, for the public's benefit, engaged in electronic interviews with six semifinalists, and they are going to be bringing back three finalists for live interviews in the next month or so. Also involved in that will definitely be a public engagement piece, some kind of a public reception, so the public will have an opportunity to meet the candidates before council makes any final decisions. And so that will be, like I said, it's going to be upcoming in probably the next 30 days or so, and we will, as that comes together, we'll publish the schedule and get names out and that kind of thing as we are able to.
Thank you.
And I guess just on the, under the item of correspondence, I just wanted to let everyone know, we, we got a letter from the National Register of Historic Places, which indicates that the Western Hotel was designated on the Historic Register, and here's the official notice. So there we go. And with that, we're done.
It was a lot of work, actually. Got a lot, a lot done.
Yeah.
That ordinance was huge.